Alrighty, it's 7:30, so I'm gonna call to order the Monday, June 22, 2020 Royal Oak City Commission Meeting to Order. We're gonna begin, because we're meeting digitally, with a roll call vote. Good evening, I'm Mayor Mike Fournier, and I'm present. Commissioner Gibbs. Commissioner Gibbs, can we get an audio? Okay, we may have a audio issue, Commissioner Gibbs. I can see your unmuted and your voice. I can see your lips moving, but I can't hear you. So maybe your mic is, needs to be picked up, but we'll come back. Commissioner Perush?
Here.
Commissioner Macy?
Here.
Commissioner Douglas?
Here.
Commissioner Dubach?
Here.
Commissioner Lassner?
Here.
Alright, and we have City Manager Paul Brake with us, and City Attorney Dave Gillum. Alright, well, we're gonna begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Macy, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Macy?
My oldest child turns 13 tomorrow. Happy birthday to Katie. She's becoming a teenager right in front of our eyes, even more so than usual, since we've been together 24/7 for several months. I've been thinking quite a bit about her generation will be shaped by the incredible upheaval that's happening during their childhoods. Across the globe, children were sent home from school, went to lockdown, parents were sent home to work, or they lost their jobs and maybe their savings. Grandparents had become off limits for visits and for hugs, and the whole world started to wear masks. It hasn't been easy or calm. And in the middle of the chaos, a lockdown world is waking up to the realities of systemic racism, of deep injustice that's rooted in our way of life. I think everyone has felt the seismic shift over the last few months, and I can only imagine what it must feel like to be a child, learning about a world and then having to start over and learn about a new world. I know there will be emotional fallout from this, but I also have hope that the children who are raised during these unsettling times will grow up with increased resiliency and a limitless capacity to reimagine the world. They have seen the status quo turn upside down, so maybe they will grow up feeling unbound by customs and institutions that no longer are serving us. Perhaps they will be the ones that we've been waiting for, able to rebuild our broken world into one that's more beautiful, safe, and just. At least that's what I'm encouraging my new teenager to look forward to, and I appreciate she and her peers can lead us to a better future. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Macy, wonderful words. Now is the time for the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask that you stand if you can.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, I'm in a new room tonight, and I was unsure what angle the camera would be at when I stood up, so I, for the benefit of everybody participating tonight, I did temporarily disable my camera. We're lucky tonight to have Senator McMorro with us here for a very important legislative update. She's been working tirelessly in Lansing, and as part of the new class in Lansing has tackled so many issues. And COVID-19 is certainly just one of them, and we're very fortunate to have Senator McMorro's presence here tonight. What I'll do, Senator McMorro, I will hand over the floor to you, and thank you for being here tonight.
Excellent, thank you very much. Very glad to be here, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. We've got a lot happening in Lansing, so I wanted to run through all of the updates and leave a little bit of time for any questions. I know probably the big question is heading into the budget, what that means for local municipalities, so I'm happy to take any questions or suggestions as we head back to session this week. So, this past week, we passed Senate Bill 690, passed through the House and the Senate, that is the COVID Relief Appropriations Bill. So this was something that we passed out of the Senate about a month ago. It sat in the House for quite a while, but we finally got it back and passed it through, and it's on its way to the governor's desk. This pulls down $880 million from the CARES Act funding that the state of Michigan received. So the state received about $3.2 billion in funding, but one of the challenges that we have had on the state level is that that funding can only be used for new COVID-related expenses. So as we look at the budget shortfall that our state and all states are facing, you know, we're looking at anywhere from $1 to $4 billion this year, and the same heading into next year, especially given that most tax bills have been delayed, so we won't even know how much we're getting into the status until those July tax dates really start to hit. So unfortunately, we can't use that $3.2 billion to backfill any of the budget holes that we're facing, like the school aid funds, like infrastructure. It can only be used for new expenses related to COVID. But we were able to work, and I do have to say that in particularly this time where it feels like everything is political, this was a really, really good process in Lansing, and the budget was a result of great negotiations between Republicans, Democrats, and the governor's office, who submitted a letter to the legislature asking for some things that they felt would be valuable as well. So I want to hit on some of the highlights of what is in that funding bill. There's $200 million to support local public health and safety workers, $25 million for additional PPE, and for any small businesses that are reopening now and wondering how to acquire PPE. I know many of the standard stores have a backlog that they have to fill. The MEDC website has a form and a portal that small businesses can connect with, and what it's trying to do is connecting many of the companies who are able to supply PPE with those who need it. I was actually really impressed when COVID broke out, the number of people, particularly small business owners in Royal Oak, who came out of the woodwork and said, you know, I've got a connection to a manufacturer in China, we can get some masks shipped, who do I talk to? So we connected a lot of those folks to the states and the State Procurement Department, so we'll be happy to follow up with that link if you want to send out to any of the small businesses in the city who are looking for a PPE connection. We also saw $29 million for increased UIA staffing and technology. So this is something that I want to address head-on. You know, this is obviously an unprecedented crisis. We are seeing 10 times the number of people applying for unemployment than we saw during the worst of the Great Recession. And my hope is that coming out of this, there is a much larger conversation to be had about updating the Unemployment Insurance Agency, making sure that it's well-funded, well-staffed, so that when we do have any sort of a crisis or downturn, that the agency is not caught unprepared. We saw the website go down, we have seen just the lack of staff being able to get back with people, and while 95% of people who have filed claims are receiving their benefits, I know that doesn't mean much to people who have been waiting six, eight weeks to get their benefits. We saw Michigan was attacked by an international fraud ring, which has been hitting many other states and trying to file claims on behalf of people by using stolen information. You know, the Equifax data breach that we saw, the Target data breach that we saw. So I've received emails from people saying, hey, I didn't file for unemployment, but I got a notification that says that my funding is coming in, and it's not going to them, it's going to a debit card that is in somebody else's name. So they've worked through a majority of those fraud cases, but I do know our office is working with about 300 cases that are stuck in the process, trying to get those resolved for people. So if there are any residents who are reaching out, who are still struggling to get through to UIA, we are happy to take that on, what we are able to do. We are wholly separate from the UIA, so we can't access their file, we can't go in and update things, we can't make calls on their behalf, but we can file a request for support that will put it into a queue. There's about 27 full-time staffers at UIA who strictly support legislative offices, and we've been able to slowly get those resolved. Unfortunately, it is taking us about four weeks to get a resolution at this point, but we will keep pushing. But my hope is that this $29 million will really, really help get about 500 additional staff onboard for the next six months to really work through this backlog and make sure that people who are recertifying, you know, every two weeks, don't hit any snags. You know, everybody has the right and will receive the full amount of their benefit from the date they became unemployed, but we know for a lot of people, they're really running up against that deadline of having bills to pay. So we're happy to help in case people come through with that. There's $125 million for daycare costs, $45 million to support domestic violence shelters. We have heard, you know, really, really devastating stories of the uptick in domestic violence incidents during the stay-home order with people who, you know, were at home in unhealthy situations. So we want to make sure that people have resources and a place to go if they are in a dangerous situation. There is $100 million in hazard pay for first responders. I've been on many, many calls with our police and fire chiefs, who, you know, some of whom were sleeping in the backyard in a tent, because they were the ones responding to house calls and sometimes walking in on somebody who had passed away or somebody who had COVID, and they didn't want to bring the virus into their families, so we want to make sure that they have access to hazard pay. There's $100 million in small business grants that will be available through the MEDC, and a $2.5 million grant for hospitality workers. We know that this is an industry, you know, we've seen this here in Royal Oak, that has been hit particularly hard. Many of our restaurants are independent, are family-owned, and we know that restaurants have a very small operating margin, as is. So we want to make sure that we give people as much of a runway as possible as we start to reopen and hopefully continue to reopen safely, that they'll be able to survive and come out the other side of this. There's a lot more in there. I'm happy to email you a copy so you can see everything that is in that. And then a couple of other things that our office has been working on. You may have heard quite a bit about cocktails-to-go and social districts, so speaking of all of our restaurants, this was actually something that many of the restaurants throughout our district reached out to me to specifically request during the shutdown, was that many other states were offering cocktails-to-go. In Michigan, we can do beer and wine for takeout and carryout, but cocktails was something that was not allowed here in the state. And I heard directly from restaurants that this would allow them to keep additional staff on. These are typically high-margin items. If you've got somebody who's willing to pay, you know, $12 for a fancy margarita in their to-go order, that's potentially people who can stay on staff. So we worked to put that bill together. I introduced it along with Senator Irwin to create social districts and allow local municipalities much more flexibility about the ability to, say, shut down a street and make that available to put tables into the street to be able to serve alcohol in those areas as well outside of a traditional festival model and beyond just taking over a parking space. So we worked really hard on that. There was another bill, that was an omnibus bill, that incorporated those two elements, along with some other reforms for liquor that passed the Senate. So I'm excited that that passed the Senate and is on its way to the House. There were a lot of us working on very similar things. So hopefully that gives you all in the city much more flexibility about what you're able to do in terms of closing down areas, designating areas that are social districts, where people can safely socially distance, take advantage of space outside. I know how popular it was when we did shut down the street, two pedestrians to allow biking and hanging out, and that's something that I've been hearing from a lot of residents who said, I want to do this in town, how can we make this happen? Other things that are happening, you know, I'd be remiss if we didn't talk about, you know, the unprecedented activism and protests that we have seen now for the past 24, 25 days. This is something that I think has moved all of us in Lansing and in my office particularly. You know, it has been incredible to see protests in Royal Oak, Troy, Rochester, Birmingham, Bloomfield Hills, and I think in much more diverse representation than we typically see protests and activism around issues of race. And that has been really moving, so we passed a Juneteenth recognition resolution in the Senate, in a bipartisan fashion, that happened in both the Senate and the House. And, you know, we still have a lot of work to do, but we did pass a Senate bill that Jeff Irwin had actually been working on for many, many years, but introduced shortly after the death of George Floyd. He did not intend to be introducing this in the wake of everything that was happening, but this bill will require de-escalation training and mental health awareness training through the MCOS program, so I know that a lot of our departments already do this, but there's inconsistency throughout the state. So I've actually heard this from our police chief, that, you know, when people transfer in, they may not have had the same training that some of the other officers do. It would also provide mental health support to officers and require that officers get recertified and have continuing education on an ongoing basis. Michigan is actually one of only about seven states that did not require this previously. So this passed on an overwhelmingly bipartisan basis as well, which I was really pleased to see. But there's still a lot of work to do, you know, I think that we are taking a real hard look at how we address, you know, discrepancies in housing and education and all of these systemic issues that have kind of led to, you know, what happened and continues to happen. So I am open for any suggestions, how I can be helpful at the state level to keep these conversations moving forward. And yeah, it's also Pride Month. We introduced a Pride Month resolution. My colleague Jeremy Moss introduced that now for the sixth year in a row, and it was not taken up, which is very disheartening to see that in the legislature, that the month of June was not recognized as Pride Month officially. And he's gonna keep pushing again this week, you know, I think especially in the wake of the Supreme Court ruling. You know, finally, that we have a ruling that our residents cannot be fired from their job because of who they are, who they love, but there's still discrimination in the Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act related to housing and public accommodation. So that's something we will keep pushing for. Other things I'm working on, a healthy workplace certification through MiOSHA. So as people start to get back out into the community, I'm sure you've all spent time in the community Facebook pages when people are sharing their experiences with some businesses who are doing a fantastic job, some businesses who may need a little bit of work. But I think that what people are looking for and what we're potentially working on with MiOSHA would be like a window placard or something that you could display, where if you qualify through the MiOSHA safety standards related to COVID, that you could advertise publicly that this is a certified safe business, that when you're going through the community, you can, you know, take a look at a window or a website and know that, okay, this business is doing everything they can to keep us safe, because there's obviously the hard reopening, which is when the doors reopen, but also rebuilding consumer confidence. You know, especially as we see the worrying trend of cases rising in other states that aren't Michigan. You know, I think Michigan wants to stay the course so that we can continue to reopen safely and sustainably. Outside of that, I just wanted to voice my very strong support. I know I'm jumping ahead to the back end of the agenda, but I know there is an item on the agenda today to consider a local ordinance prohibiting conversion therapy. And this is something that I have been working on for the past year and a half. I introduced a bill that unfortunately has not received a committee hearing yet. My bill would require that all licensed therapists in the state be prohibited from practicing so-called conversion therapy. It has been universally decried by every mental health organization, and even from an economic and business standpoint, I think this is long overdue and is the right thing for Michigan. Michigan currently ranks 45th out of 50th in the country for hate crimes and our management of hate crimes. And we've seen surveys from young people who may be considering leaving the state or leaving our communities, because it's not perceived as welcoming, as maybe some other states are. And as we fight constantly to compete for talent, I think that it's important that we know we are welcoming, let's put all the tools out there. And particularly when it comes to licensed therapists, you know, I've heard really devastating stories of parents who want to do the right thing, who may have a son who, or daughter who's LGBTQ, and they don't know as a parent necessarily how to deal with that, because that's not something that they've experienced, who are searching for a licensed therapist with good intentions to help their son or daughter work through this, but are finding themselves in really dangerous, really damaging situations. And we know that particularly young people who go through this type of so-called treatment are at a much higher risk for depression, anxiety, suicide, and the stories that we've gotten personally from some people in our office are just absolutely devastating and heartbreaking. So it's a small but important thing that we can do, since we introduced our bill in the legislature. There are now, I believe, six communities around the state who have adopted local ordinances, which is fantastic. And I'm really encouraged that that is being considered here today, so wanted to pop in and say thank you for the consideration and voice my support for that as well.
Well, I think the thank you is mutual, Senator McMorro. We appreciate everything you're doing, especially all the backup. I mean, we've talked about a number of different ideas. You pulled together several small business councils. I've had the luxury of participating on a few of those, and, you know, certainly uncovering every rock and turning over every rock and lifting every stone to find out what we can do to not just make, you know, our state better, but our state better. And you went over a whole myriad of things, from economic support to banning conversion therapy. There's a whole lot there, but it's just, I know you're working very, very hard. Are there any questions for Senator McMorro while we have here sequestered on the public line? Oh, Commissioner Macy?
So what about that state shared revenue?
Oh yes, the revenue. So, you know, it is, it's not a great forecast, right? You know, I just have to be upfront. It looks particularly devastating, and, you know, I will say upfront, I was a little bit gobsmacked by a resolution that was introduced in the House to encourage the state of Michigan to reject any additional federal funding. We know that every single state in the country is facing an economic crisis right now. We also know that due to the lack of flexibility with the CARES Act funding, you know, we've been working with all of our federal colleagues, my district overlaps, Congresswoman Slotkin, Congresswoman Stevens, and Congressman Levin, on the need to have not only more flexibility in how that funding is used, but more flexibility going to our local municipalities, which was something that we didn't see in the first round of CARES Act funding. So we're continuing to push for that, and I will say, the priorities that we've seen in the legislature so far, you know, one of my priorities is not cutting K-12 funding. And that has been something that has been echoed by Majority Leader Shirky as well. So I will hopefully try to hold everybody to that as much as possible, because I think that as we look at the future of our state and making sure that we continue to grow and attract and retain both talent and families, we can't afford cuts to our education system. But also, local municipalities has been something that I've been pushing very strongly, because, you know, for many of us, we're still not back to where we were or anywhere close from the recession. I think we learned a lot in what not to do, coming out of 2008, 2009. And when I talk to residents who say, you know, I pay taxes and it doesn't feel like it goes to anything, that's because local municipal funding has been cut, because that's what you see every day. That is, you know, your local street and your police and fire and public safety. So I don't think we can afford to cut that. I know the local municipal caucus is working with MML on some potential changes to Headley and Prop A, which I know are long overdue, and there is some bipartisan interest there. But, you know, I think that the long and short of it is, we need additional federal funding to be able to fill our budget. So we'll keep pushing for that, you know, the, one of the things that I pushed very hard for last year was to require that our state budget be complete by July 1st, because that's when schools need to start planning for their budgets for the following year. That is something that we unanimously agreed is not possible this year, particularly because tax bills have been delayed. We just don't know what revenue will be coming into the state, so we're still on the October 1st deadline that was in place prior to last year. But yeah, if there are specific ideas or really, really, this cannot be cut, needs, please let me know, because we're gonna start putting in our requests, you know, unfortunately, I don't serve on the appropriation committee directly, but I'm in daily communication with those that are. And though session will be ending this week for, I believe, about a month, the appropriations committees will still be meeting fairly regularly, because we need to get the budget sorted.
Just on that question, Senator McMorro, I mean, that, a lot of that centered around some of the short-term needs of municipalities and some of the short-term funding of the state. Have you, or are you guys still more in triage mode, or are you looking more in the longer term? I know you mentioned a little bit about Headley and Prop A, but are there other things in the long term? We start to look to next fiscal year and the fiscal year after that, that there's a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel where this problem will be solved?
Yeah, you know, my hope is that the conversations that we have been having over the past few years don't go away, which is that Michigan has a revenue issue. You know, many of the things that we need to pay for, we need to find new revenue, whether that is a graduated income tax, like Representative Ellison has been pushing for for many years, or, you know, changes in structure, or peeling back some of our corporate tax incentives. I've been advocating very loudly that we reconsider some of our incentive programs. I serve on the Economic Development and Small Business Committee, and as we've seen this trend around the country of many of these large-scale corporate tax incentive programs that aren't panning out, looking at Foxconn, looking at all of these companies in New Jersey who filed claiming they were gonna go to New York so that they could get a very, very steep tax cut when they had never even filed paperwork to move. So I think really just tightening up some of our incentives, obviously, we want to keep economic growth happening. But I think if you look at Virginia, for example, when they competed for Amazon HQ2 and won, it was a much smaller incentive package than what we put forward in the state of Michigan, but it was combined with expanding a new campus of Virginia Tech and infrastructure and public transit improvements, where if we start to think about incentives in the way that every time we go after a major economic development program, we're also using it as a catalyst to invest in ourselves, I think is gonna have a higher return on investment in the long run. But, you know, that is, the honest answer is I think everybody is still in triage mode at the moment, but I don't think we can lose sight of the fact that, you know, before COVID happened, we had an infrastructure issue. We have green ooze in Madison Heights, we had a dam collapse, which did not need to happen on top of the fact that we were facing COVID-19. So, you know, if we can get to a place where we are appropriately funding the things that are preventable so that we are better prepared when there is a crisis like COVID-19, that is more out of our control.
Thank you, Senator McMorro. Anybody else have any questions? Alright, well, we're very grateful for taking time out of your busy schedule tonight to spend it with us and updating people of Royal Oak on some of the things that are going on in Lansing, some of the things that are getting traction, and some of the things we hope get traction. So again, really appreciate your partnership with the city of Royal Oak, and I'm grateful for all you do, Senator McMorro. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and a final plug for anybody watching, if you are running into unemployment issues, you can go to our website, senatorsmccmorrow.com, and there's more information on how you can file to start a support ticket with us to help you get that resolved.
Great, good to know. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next agenda item, I think we have public comment. Ms. Schwanger?
Yes, Mayor Fournier, we have six public comments, all this evening.
I am not, I live at 1526 West Webb Street, a Royal Oak resident for 16 years. I'm calling to thank the commission for taking up a discussion on the conversion therapy ban by mental health practitioners and minors. So-called conversion therapy, sometimes known as reparative therapy, is a range of dangerous and descriptive practices that falsely claim to change a person's sexual orientation or gender identity or expression. Such practices have been rejected by every mainstream medical and mental health organization for decades, but due to continuing discrimination and societal bias against LGBTQ people, some practitioners continue to conduct conversion therapy. Minors are especially vulnerable, and conversion therapy can lead to depression, anxiety, drug use, homelessness, and an increased risk for suicide. In short, it's child abuse. To point out just how discreditable it is, conversion therapy has been rejected by the American Medical Association, the American Psychological Association, American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Council of Association, American School Council Association, and many others. Twenty states have banned conversion therapy, but Michigan is not among them. Our state legislature has not taken up Senator McMorro's both Bantingburg and their exam minors. However, municipalities can, and they have. Banks have already been instituted in the neighboring cities of Farnborough, Huntington Woods, and even Berkeley. Now, because it is state and not municipality that regulate the licensing of healthcare providers, the crime would not be punished, the crime would only be punished as a misdemeanor, and we encourage the commission to consider the stiffest penalty allowable. Admittedly, there is no evidence I'm aware that this abuse is watched by Royal Oak, but that's not the point. Some might even say, doesn't the commission have more pressing issues to focus on than this? I submit, this is exactly the kind of issue forward-thinking city leaders should champion in response to requests by concerned and forward-thinking residents. This is an example of a simple proactive measure the city can take to make Royal Oak more of a simple proactive measure the city can take to make Royal Oak more safe, inclusive, and welcoming. My name is Anna Fow.
My name is Michael Aquilina, and my wife and I reside at 501 East Third Street. Our property abuts to the petitioner's property, which is located at 217 Knowles Street. We've previously submitted a letter to the Planning Commission dated June 5, 2020, regarding Special Land Use and Safe Plan 20-04-06. We would like the City Commission to take a close look at our entire letter, and calling today to request that members specifically address our concern regarding the placement of the access road, which we feel was not addressed at the Planning Commission meeting. In our letter to the Planning Commission, we requested that the access road be moved as far as possible, approximately 10 feet to the west. As presently designed, the access road will be very close, less than three feet from our property line, and only about 12 feet from the side of our house. The placement of said access road this close to our home would negatively impact the use and enjoyment of our property due to the noise, dust, and fumes from vehicle traffic, not to mention that would not be aesthetically pleasing. Redesign would save trees and plants that we had planted and maintained on, or just outside our property line. It would also allow the planting of additional trees, either by us or the city, on our side of the access road. This would provide a partial reduction of air and noise pollution, and more aesthetically pleasing appearance from our perspective. Your consideration regarding this matter, and please stay safe.
My name is Angie Twist. I live on Woodley in Royal Oak. I have two issues that I would like to bring up to the State Commission. First of all, I would like to see if the Woodward Side Area subdivision could get some kind of parking permit for the day of the, the day that the drink cruise is supposed to occur. I know that it is not being run this year, but I am certain that people are still going to be showing up. We really do not want people throughout our neighborhood walking the streets. So if we could get some kind of no permit, or a park, permit parking sign like they do downtown for our speech needs, that would be really appreciated. I called the Planning Committee, and they told me that I needed to call the Commission and ask for you to do that. The second issue that I'd like to bring up is the Starbucks at Guilford and Woodward. It is really a huge problem. Any given time during the day, it is often backed up past Guilford, at least, quite often to Woodley. And it is very hard to get out of the, these streets. They block the areas, and it is just a really big hazard and dangerous situation. I'm hoping that there's something that can be done to help our residential area around there. Thank you.
My name is Arvin Gredy. I live at 18 South Pleasant. I'm calling firstly to support a ban on conversion therapy. It's above us, and it has no place in our city. Secondly, I'd like to discuss Commissioner Lavassar's resolution regarding defunding the police. The Commissioners and other members of our community have stated their support for our chief in the department several times. I've done so myself. But how on earth can it make sense for us to tell other communities what they should do with their own department? Commissioner Lavassar's resolution calls for us to do that. I'm glad to see that hasn't made the agenda, and I hope it isn't added. Furthermore, if we as a community were to decide some functions currently handled by the police to be handled by other professionals, that would actually be beneficial for officers, because they would be put in fewer difficult positions. I think we should always be open to improving how we do things when there's no opportunity. Thank you.
I'm George Rab. I live on Shenandoah in Royal Oak, right off of 13 Mile Road. I'm calling regarding the defunding of the Royal Oak Police. I need everybody there to understand that I am completely and totally against defunding the Royal Oak Police. I know that the Royal Oak crime rates are, well, they certainly not perfect at 100%, but we are in the top 25% in the country, so we're having good crime rates. That's encouraging. But if defunding the police is going to cause more crime, and our ratings go down, our house values go down. And I can't imagine why a single homeowner or business owner in Royal Oak would be for defunding the police. I'm totally against it. Everyone that I've talked to is against it. I'm shocked that the members of the City Council would only find two people that were for not defunding the police. Thank you.
My name is Kim Moon. I live at 815 Lewis in Royal Oak. I just wanted to voice my support for the ban on conversion therapy. This is horrible misuse of science. It's been banned in lots of places. It's been thoroughly discredited, and it's about time we ban it in Royal Oak as well. And it's a great time to do it during LGBT Pride Month. So that's one. The other comment I had is to ask, you know, the Human Rights Commission that was approved at the last City Commission meeting, I would like to know when people will be able to apply for that meeting. I didn't see anything about it on the website, so I would really like to know when can, people can apply for that. And also, I would like to, again, ask for release to the public of data relating to the conduct of the Royal Oak Police Department, such as youth support policies and racial makeup of who gets stopped at traffic stops. You know, there needs to be some civilian oversight, and I really think that starts with data. So, thank you so much. Bye.
Mayor Fournier, that concludes the public comment for the speaking.
Thank you, Ms. Schwanger. We appreciate that. This, now that public comment is over, this brings us to item number seven, which is the approval of the agenda. I'll ask whoever makes the motion. I see Commissioner Perush has made a motion that we add City Clerk Hallis's request about a contract with the county to count absentee ballots. So Commissioner Perush, your motion? Oh, I think you're on mute, Commissioner Perush. Touchy buttons tonight.
I do that every week. I apologize. I'll move that we add the request of City Clerk Melanie Hallis to enter into an agreement with Oakland County for, excuse me, for counting the absentee ballots, both for the August and the November elections this year.
Is there a second? Let's see, a second by Commissioner Dubach. Okay. Any discussion? I see Commissioner Lavassar.
Yeah, just to be clear, is this a motion for adoption of the agenda with that added item?
Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to add one more proposed amendment, and that is to move for discussion on a resolution supporting law enforcement professionals, as well as maintaining funding for our law enforcement.
A motion by Commissioner Lavassar. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Gibbs? Okay. Commissioner Lavassar?
Thank you. And as the Commission is aware, last week I suggested that we have that discussion on tonight's agenda. And I do thank Commissioner Gibbs for supporting my suggestion to add that to the agenda. But we didn't get it added on. I took it a step further after, I didn't get that required third, and actually drafted a proposed resolution and support, and circulated that. And yet, we just didn't get, get the matter added on. I think during this time, you know, certainly there's, there's a lot going on in the world. One of the unfortunate things that have gone on during all this is that good cops, good, hardworking people who are supporting our communities, and they're doing it in a very fair and unbiased way, are being treated very poorly. And I think it's important that we recognize that, that their efforts need to be recognized, that they need to be appreciated, that not all cops are bad cops. Most cops are very good cops, and they're very conscientious about how they do their jobs, and they do so in a professional manner. And so I do believe it's important that we, as a commission, express that.
Thank you, Commissioner Lavassar. I have Commissioner Perush.
Can I ask, Mr. Gillum, a point of order, I made a motion, and it was supported, and then Commissioner Lavassar made a motion and supported. Should we be voting these on two separate motions?
Yeah. Right, right now, the, it's an amendment. He posed his motion as an amendment, Commissioner Perush.
Okay. I apologize. I didn't understand it to be worded quite that way.
Yes. Right now, in front of us is discussion only about an amendment for Commissioner Lavassar's resolution. Any other discussion? I see Commissioner Dubach.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I know that Commissioner Lavassar floated this out here last week and, and, didn't get a response. And I think that's because, you know, you know, there's, there's several concerns of the issue being raised. You know, not that there's a lack of support for police officers. We actually just had an award ceremony for outstanding service just last month. But, you know, first of all, I think that the timing is concerning. You know, last week, we passed a resolution recognizing that, you know, we as a community and our nation need to grapple with the legacy of racism, and systemic bias that's permeating all of our institutions. And addressing that reality is, you know, the right thing to do, whether that's in the clerk's office, or engineering, or within the police department. Yeah, the police department are a big part of the conversation that's happening. But that is not an attack on police. It's a recognition of our collective responsibility as a community to make change. And, you know, our, our responsibility at this table to do the work necessary to set our staff up to succeed in serving this community in the most just and effective way possible. So that's, that's on us. And that's good for everybody, which is, I think, why the resolution passed unanimously last week. Bringing this resolution forward tonight appears intended to serve as some sort of counterpoint to the commitment we made last week. And, you know, it just feels very much like a political stunt, using our department as a prop. And I, I feel like that's beneath this body. So, you know, to be clear, you can say it loudly and proudly, Black Lives Matter, and still believe in public safety and supporting men and women who serve in good faith every day. That's, that's not an uplink, counterpoint that, that I think is a problem here. And I've given the important conversations that are happening. And there's also no need to reaffirm our commitment to public safety, because for most of us at the table, it is not in question. I think through our actions and our deeds and our votes, you know, we've made our commitment quite clear. While, you know, Commissioner bringing it forward continues to try to shoot down our public safety mileage, opposes moving into an effective building where we'd improve quality of life for our, our staff and services for our residents, even opposed reducing healthcare costs on police and other staff. So it just, it just feels very disingenuous and opportunistic to me. So, for those reasons, I'm not able to support adding this item on this agenda this evening. I, it feels unnecessary, redundant with actions that we've already taken at this table.
Okay. Commissioner Douglas next?
Thank you, Mayor. The document that Commissioner Lavassar circulated among the Commissioners is titled "Resolution Supporting Law Enforcement Professionals and Denouncing Efforts to Defund the Police." Because this is what Commissioner Dubach said, absolutely, we support our law enforcement professionals, as a caller pointed out. We have a very well-regarded police department under an excellent chief, and their work has made us one of the safest cities in Michigan and indeed the United States. This whole phrase "defund the police," I'm not sure where that's coming from. We've heard it nationally, I suppose, but the approximately 60 emails that the Commissioners have received don't really use that phrase. They talk about wanting to change our police department, but they're not really calling for us to defund the department. So I take exception to that phrase in the title of this resolution. But the thing I take greatest exception to is that it is a resolution denouncing efforts to defund the police, denouncing. I don't think this Commission should be acting on a resolution that attacks earnest citizens' desires, maybe many young people, but earnest citizens' desires for a world that is most safe and just. I think it's undignified. I think our resolution should affirm, not tear down. If Commissioner Lavassar comes back to this table for a positive, balanced, respectful discussion, I would be happy to join in. Other than that, I can't support his, his motion.
Anybody else? Commissioner Lavassar, and I'll remind you, Commissioner Lavassar, that this is, I don't want to get into the discussion of the merits, because that would be against Robert's rules. But as far as adding it to the agenda or not, that's what we're discussing. Okay, Commissioner Lavassar?
I do appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. And I do know that you didn't give the same type of warning to other Commissioners when they ventured off a little bit and talked about the merits of the, of the resolution. But, but the thing is, the, the question is simply whether to put it on the agenda where we can then have a frank discussion. If there's a need to reword things, then we can reword it while we discuss it on the agenda. But right now, the question is simply whether we're going to put it on the agenda and have that discussion. That's number one. Number two, I wanted to point out that Commissioner Dubach forgot a couple of things that I've supported. And, you know, number one is proper funding of our, our public safety pension funds. A couple of years ago, you may remember, I suggested adding $2.5 million to the budget for purposes of properly funding the pension. And number two, I've, I've also supported not reallocating funds that came out of the public safety mileage for other purposes. You know, our former City Commissioner, he admitted as much in a memo, which many of the members of this Commission saw at the time, that indicated that was more a marketing ploy to get the mileage passed, called a public safety mileage, as opposed to a general mileage.
Anybody else? Mr. Perush?
I'll make sure.
Okay.
There we go. Um, a couple of things. I, I think that the way it is phrased in front of us right this second, the resolution sign, sounds pretty benign and innocuous. And, you know, supporting public safety and supporting our police department, everyone, of course, can sign on to that. Unfortunately, the specific wording of this resolution, I find, I find quite troubling. It, it, it seems to take the snapshot of what has been happening across the country that you see on Fox News or CNN, and translating it into a policy statement to apply here in Royal Oak, which doesn't fit whatsoever. We had almost 4,000 people peacefully marching and demonstrating in our community over the past 10 days. They were escorted happily by the police department and given bottled water by the police department. Do we have a police department that has adopted the de-escalation policies and a number of the policies that the people in other communities are going to be striving to implement in their own communities? Unfortunately, the way the resolution is worded, it kind of gives the impression that you are either for the protesters, or you're for the police, and you can't be for both. It's a very, it, it's framed in such a way so that the issue is, is either or. And unfortunately, or fortunately, these issues that have been playing out in front of us these days are much, much more nuanced. But we can fully support the police department and the activities that they have in our community. And we also can fully support the protesters and their actions, and their efforts to make our community better by improving our police department. And that is not reflected whatsoever in this resolution. It's very, you either support the protesters, or you support the police, and you can't have both. And so unfortunately, I can't support this resolution. And the idea of putting it on the agenda and wordsmithing at the, at the, at the table is not something that I'm really interested in. And if Commissioner Lavassar has different ideas as to how this resolution could be approved, I would recommend that he take it back and bring it back to us at the next meeting, and, and perhaps we'll have something in front of us that we can all support. But in the meantime, I, I can't support the wording of this resolution.
Anybody else? Commissioner Dubach? Commissioner Dubach, can you unmute yourself, please, sir?
Yeah. So just to be clear, my, my primary issue with this is, is the timing. I just think bringing this forward in the midst of the intense and important conversations that are happening right now is, it's not, it's not just not ideal, it's somewhat disingenuous and an insult to both those serving and marching in the streets. So, you know, I just think our officers and our residents deserve better than Trump-style political theater and opportunism. So, again, tonight's, tonight's not the night to consider this.
Commissioner Gibbs, did I see your hand go up? Commissioner Gibbs? No? Okay. Sorry, I thought you- Okay, sorry, I thought you seconded the motion. I thought I saw your hand go up. Um, Commissioner Macy? Okay, now I can see your hand. All right, I got an affirmative on that one. It's still hard.
Yeah, I mean, I think. Um, I think what, what the other commissioners have said so far kind of has put into, put into focus to me what my real struggle with this is. Uh, which is that it's a political stunt and it was set up to divide us and, um, Commissioner LaVassar is smart enough that he did that on purpose. And I don't, I feel like this isn't the time for that. He knows well that we support the police. The voting record will show who in fact has been supportive of the police over their years on the commission. Um, and it, to me, doing this right now and this, at this moment. And putting a, putting, pointing a finger at the people who are out there protesting and instead. Instead of centering their voices, what's, what we're trying to do right now, center these voices that have not been heard. Um, about this deep injustice that has, that is rampant in the country. And instead, using them and, and turning it around and making them the bullies is just. Brazen and unfortunate and another way of dividing our country, which we don't need right now. Um, so again, I think we've all said the same thing. We support our police. There's no intention in this body to defund the police. And Commissioner LaVassar knows well that defund the police is an activist-driven call that seeks to address the, some difficult and systemic problems. In the way that municipalities op- operate. And anyone who really looks into it with a sincere interest can see that most people advocating for this defunding are not talking about eliminating police officers. Or eliminating funding to all, to the entire, um, force. But that they see that the system is broken and that there are ways that we could shore it up in some places. Um, by moving some things around and by looking at it in a new light. And I think, um, looking at their call for that change and making it seem like it's a call. Against our, against our, uh, police officers is just wrong and upsetting.
Anybody else? I mean, I'll just add that we have, um, a police department in Royal Oak that has made tremendous strides over the last decades. We have officers that go through de-escalation training twice a year. Um, through policy, we've implemented the eight can't wait well before the demands to implement the eight can't wait. But the most important attribute of our police department is that they listen. They don't try to point fingers. They try to support, help. And one of the reasons why we have a great police department is because we're always striving to do better. We're always open to listening to new ideas and implementing those ideas with success. And we know that there's always room to grow and that the conversation always has to be front and center. And as stressful as this time is for everybody, um, it's through listening and understanding. Not through making symbolic gestures of pitting one party against another. That's not how we're going to, to make progress as a nation, as a state, as a municipality. And frankly speaking, um, you know, our support of our police department because they've made changes over the years, because we've. Um, had a good track record and, and because, you know, where we make a mistake, we stand up and work harder to even do a better job. Uh, and we have a great culture and we have great officers and that culture continues to grow. Um, you know, we've, we've reinforced our, our support of them by, you know, all the votes that we've cast over the years for the millage. Uh, to make sure that they have the adequate funds to get trained and do the things that they do for the body cams. I mean, there are two, there are a couple of commissioners up here that voted against ten thousand dollars for car cams that, that, you know, the police department was recommending for. Um, you know, we, we, we look and we, and we make sure that, um, you know, our support is always contingent on. The reciprocation that we get great service and that's what our community is built on when it comes to public safety. And so eliminating all conversations in the future, um, there, there's no intent here for anybody to defund. I mean, quite, well, I can tell you at least five of us voted for a budget, uh, to keep the police department funded a few weeks, a couple of weeks ago. Uh, and there were two that didn't. Um, so I don't think there's a, a, a question here, uh, broadly, that the city commission looks, uh, to defund. I think that, to me, um, this was proposed and, and probably the reason why it didn't get. A second look by other commissioners is it didn't make a lot of sense. I don't think we have a support of the police issue. I think we have a trust issue among some of the members of the commission. So. Uh, with that, I'm going to call for the vote. Uh, well, okay, Commissioner Perush.
Just very quickly, I want the public to understand that, uh, we've all thrown out the number that we've received sixty emails or a hundred emails or whatever. Requesting defunding the police department. I want the public to understand that those emails don't represent, um, a large broad-based coalition of people who actually have some power and authority. To make those kinds of changes or even to lobby for those kinds of changes in any kind of powerful or ineffective way right now. If you look very closely at the names, um, of the people who sent those emails, number one. Every single email was almost identical, which means one person wrote it and then everyone else copied it on their, on their cell phones and sent it to us. And number two, about ninety-five percent of those people were high school students and young people. Probably many of them who, who, people who mark, uh, marched in one of the protests in downtown Royal Oak. So I want the public to understand that when you, you talk about, you know, oh, there's a hundred people out there who are lobbying for defunding the police department. Granted, some of those are, um, are people who are. Longtime members of the community and they're very concerned about these types of issues. But ninety-five percent of those people were high school students and young people who are very passionate. They are very committed to this cause and hopefully, hopefully, their generation will fix this when my generation. And my children's generation have not really done a very good job with them. So I don't want to take any action by this commission tonight to discourage. Those young people from expressing those opinions and for being willing to get involved in these types of issues. Because we need them, because quite frankly, we haven't done the job.
Thank you, Commissioner Perush. And I'll just add, I mean, if you have any regular conversation with our police leadership, um, and, and officers. You'll know that their position isn't to ignore people's concerns, it's to listen to people's concerns. And the way this is written sort of defies that opening ear that our police department has had a tradition of, of having. And so it, it creates a, 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 almost something opposite of the culture of our police department to be engaging and listening. Even with people that may seemingly on the surface have a different point of view. But that's how we get better. That's how our police department has gotten better over ten, twenty years is because they listen. And I think, uh, they're not antagonistic and they don't reject people's ideas, thoughts. Um, and, and even how crazy or how simple the idea might be or how big or how small the complaint might be. Um, it's, uh, they, they have a culture of listening and I think that, um, if you have a chance to speak to our police officers. Or you have a chance to speak to the police leadership, I think that you'll see that, um, maybe a lot of the wording in this resolution is inconsistent with that. So I'm going to, um, call for the vote. We're going to do a, um, roll call vote. I'm going to start as I see them. This is for the amendment, uh, to, um, the agenda. So I'll start with Commissioner Gibbs.
Am I voting?
You're voting for the amendment that Commissioner LaVassar put out and that you supported.
I'm in favor of yes.
Does he vote yes? Okay, Commissioner Perush?
No.
Mr. Macy?
No.
Mr. Douglas?
No.
Mr. Dubak?
No.
Commissioner LaVassar?
Yeah.
And I vote no. So that brings us to the original motion, which is the approval of the agenda. Uh, moved by Commissioner Perush with the addition of a discussion, uh, for city, uh, Clerk Hallis' absentee vote counting from the county. Um, any discussion on this? Uh, Commissioner Dubak?
I apologize, Mayor. I did want to offer one more amendment, which is to bring the conversion therapy forward to just after consent. Uh, because we do have a, a guest, Dave Garcia, uh, to speak to the issue. Uh, I'd move for that, uh, amendment to the agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Dubak, supported by Commissioner Douglas. Any discussion? Okay, just to be clear, Commissioner Dubak, uh, ahead of the consent agenda?
Just after consent.
After consent, okay. All right, I'll call for a vote, uh, reverse order, Commissioner LaVassar.
Yeah.
Mr. Dubak?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Perush?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that brings us back again to the original, um, motion. Any discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. Uh, Commissioner Gibbs?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Perush?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Dubak?
Yes.
Mr. LaVassar?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, so, uh, that brings us to the approval, or no, now, yeah, we did the original, back to the original motion. Okay. So we have an agenda after a little bit of, uh, back and forth there. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda for discussion? Okay, so does anyone wish to move the consent agenda? Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
A motion by Commissioner Perush, second by Commissioner Douglas. Consent agenda now consists of city commission meetings from June eighth. City clerk requests to fill position, claims June sixteenth, seventeenth, and nineteenth, approval of purchase orders, award of professional engineering services, community development block grants. Divertor improvements, um, approval of cost participation agreement, uh, master arm upgrades eleven mile and I seventy-five. Approval of England civil contract modification, already Oaks phase two construction, Department of Public Services requests to fill vacancy. Resolution to establish a municipal energy fund and funding from utility rebates. Receive and file non-action items in May twenty twenty investment report. Any discussion? All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. We'll start with Commissioner LaVassar.
Yes.
Mr. Dubak?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, so we now have the consent agenda passed and based on the agenda amendment approved. We are now movering, moving up item seventeen ahead of item nine, which is the consideration to adopt an ordinance to ban conversion therapy as requested by Commissioner Dubak. For the mayor, for any, Commissioner Macy. Commissioner Dubak, I'll let you, uh, kick it off and then if we have, uh, Mr. Garcia back.
There he is, alright.
There he is, okay, good. He's connecting now, so perfect timing.
Okay, so, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, as you heard from Senator McMorro, um. We were, uh, considering that the motion we have to the agenda night is to, uh, you know, discuss, uh, directing staff to bring us back in ordinance to ban, uh, conversion therapy. In the city of Royal Oak, um, as she mentioned, it's really a kind of barbaric debunked practice of trying to change a person's sexual orientation or gender identity. Uh, using a variety of tactics that often result in really severe emotional or psychological, uh, harm to the individual. Um, it's been banned in, in several states, including California, Colorado, Connecticut, Delaware, Hawaii, Illinois, I mean, um. Along with, uh, and, and several municipalities and states where, uh, you know, like, uh, the majority in our legislature have not seen fit to. Residents, uh, from this practice and so cities have, have taken on the mantle of passing ordinances banning it. Including our neighbors, as, as mentioned, Huntington Wood, Berkeley and, and Ferndale. So our, our passage of an ordinance would help really build out, you know, kind of a quilt, uh, of protection from this, for our, for our practice. Um, before I put a motion on the table, um, we, I did invite, um, uh, Dave Garcia as the executive director of affirmations to speak a little bit on the issue. And what it means, uh, for the community, uh, with your permission, Mayor, and the permission of the body.
Yeah, I, I, I'll take, uh, chair, uh, privilege here. Mr. Garcia, thank you for, uh, attending tonight and help us, uh, understand this important topic even more than, than what we've, uh, learned. And, um, you know, the floor is yours and, uh, we're here to listen. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you, commissioners. Good evening, everybody. Uh, my name's Dave Garcia. I, I know many of you. Um, I am the executive director of affirmations and Ferndale affirmations is actually the largest LGBT community center in the state of Michigan. It is my second time back at the helm for the last, I've been back for about a year, for, for five years plus. Before that, I was the policy director, public policy director at the Los Angeles LGBTQ community center. Which is the largest LGBT organization in the world. And our policy department did a lot of work on conversion therapy while there. Before that, I was the executive director of the Kalamazoo LGBT community center. Back then, I had a different name. Now it's Outfront Kalamazoo. So I've been doing this work a long time and I, and I don't need to repeat what you heard on the phone. I don't need to, uh, repeat what Senator, uh, McMorro said. Uh, but I do want to just tell you as fellow human beings that I've been seeing the ramifications of conversion therapy for twenty years. And I have seen suicides, dozens of suicides directly related to conversion therapy. I have, I could tell you horror stories on the worst extremes of electric shock therapy. To ridiculous stories. One, uh, kid I knew got sent to a camp, you know, these, um, troubled teen camps. And by his parents because he came out. And these camps are all over the country. We worked hard to ban them in California. But a lot of these camps where conversion therapy is used, it's denial of food, it's, it's isolation. It's, you know, they put you in closets for days at a time, sexual abuse. I mean, the, the stories are, are horrific. Uh, what, to, to, like I said, to ridiculous. One kid, they, he was made to watch straight porn every day. And copy down verses of the Bible every single day while he was there. So some are horrific, some are ridiculous, but in every case detrimental. Every single professional person that you talk to that isn't blinded by prejudice. Uh, or bigotry will tell you the harmful ramifications of conversion therapy. You cannot change someone's sexual orientation. And if you try to convince them that they can change, uh, or they're going to go to hell or they're going to suffer some kind of repercussion. It doesn't take a genius for any of us, any of us here to see how harmful that can be and what it can lead to. And whether that is drug abuse or alcoholism or suicide. There is a reason forty percent of LGBT youth, uh, forty percent of all youth in Los Angeles, for example, identify as LGBT. You know, they get kicked out of their homes when they go, sent away to these camps or to a therapist that, uh, tries to force conversion therapy. They feel they got nowhere else to go and so they run away. Oftentimes that's LA. And I certainly saw that, but really in all major cities. You have a significant amount of homeless youth who identify as LGBTQ. And even at the center, and by the way, you all know affirmation serves hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of your citizens as well in Royal Oak. We have always been close partners. It's, we serve the entire region and really beyond, beyond southeast Michigan at affirmations. We see these kids. These are the kids that come through our doors when we're open, when it's not COVID. We see them coming in, you know, um, it's our trans kids. It's our trans kids who feel like they can only be safe at affirmations. It's kids right now who are hiding upstairs with headphones on, trying to be a part of our youth group because our youth group can't meet right now. And so, you know, they're upstairs as a part of the, uh, part of the Zoom meetings that we have for all of our support groups, by the way. Uh, so that they have someplace, someone someplace safe to turn to. This practice needs to go away. I don't know if you're familiar, um, Los Angeles and the University of Southern California have the largest, has the largest LGBT archive. It's called One Archive. There's an actual device at One Archive that you can see, back in the day, it was a portable electrocution machine. That they used to use to electrocute gay men to try, anytime they had a thought about same-sex, it was a therapy. And you can see the machine. But it's not much different when you have a certified therapist telling a kid that they can change who they are. Or that they need to change who they are. The results are the same. And so I implore you to think about how outdated and harmful this practice is. And I am telling you, for twenty years, I've seen it every single day. But this is serious ramifications that these practices have across the country and in our state. And I'm sorry that when, you know, we passed that law, by the way, to protect, uh, to stop camps, these troubled teen camps. Um, and that social services could come in unannounced in the state of California. These camps then, because some of these kids were dying, simply closed up and went to Nevada or Florida or other states and reopened under a different name. And we can't touch them there because conservatives won't even allow, we tried to have a federal law to, to do this. But it wasn't even allowed to come up for a hearing, even when you had Adam Schiff. And by the way, uh, Ross Laitner, Republican out of Florida, trying to get this passed. So if, if our, if Lansing's not going to do it and the feds aren't going to do it, then we got, then you guys have to do it, city by city.
Thank you, Dave. Um, you know, it's so hard to hear some of the stories that you've conveyed to us and that others have conveyed to us. Um, and, and not only are they hard to hear, it's hard to. And not only are they hard to hear, it's hard to believe that in this age, it still goes on. I think of my precious kids, my seven-year-old, my eight-year-old, my twelve-year-old. And I couldn't imagine if they had any sort of struggle in life or whatever it may be, that if you put your trust in a therapist to help them positively work through whatever they need to work through to find acceptance and love, it's something the absolute opposite happens. To me, that is just unconscionable. And to me, I'm very glad that you're here tonight. I know the work you've done in LA. I know the work you do at affirmations in Ferndale and what everyone does that works for affirmations in Ferndale. And you are true an army of compassion and an army of progress. And, you know, we do rely on testimony to help us make decisions in this particular case. And we're very grateful for you being here tonight and for your, your drive and motivation. So thank you. Are there any questions for, for Mr. Garcia? Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Garcia, how do we, how would we put teeth into our ordinance? That is, how do communities enforce ordinances like this?
Well, that's a good question. I mean, the Ferndale council actually decided, if you're familiar with what they did, they actually made it a misdemeanor. And it was punishable by short jail time and a significant fine. They bumped it up. That wasn't even the initial ask. If I remember correctly, as that was passing through city council, they voted to heighten the penalty. So it's, you know, it's up to the city, it's up to the municipalities on the kind of penalty that they, I mean, you guys only can do so much, right? I mean, you have a you have a max of what you can find and what you can, what you can do for something like this. So I don't know your, I don't know Royal Oak's municipal laws and what you can and cannot do, but I know it can be, it can be a misdemeanor. It can be more than a misdemeanor. It can be punishable by ninety days or one hundred and eighty days. I would, I'm sure you have a city attorney who could tell you the maximum penalty that you could assess.
So I guess my question is, how do we, how do communities find out that it's happening? Is it reported by the victim? And how do HIPAA laws keep communities from getting the information they need to be effective?
Yeah, well, from my experience, they, it can be reported from a number of different, it can be other therapists who know that it's going on. It often is the individual themselves, although not always. It's often the parents. You know, they're, not all parents are complicit in this. They sent like, you know, like Mike said, they send them to someone who they trust and then that kid comes home and says, this is what happened today. Right? So sometimes it's the parents. It could come from a number of different sources. I don't, I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, partly. Have any, are you familiar with communities that have had success prosecuting such cases? I mean, not necessarily just here in Michigan, but across the country.
I'm not, I certainly can get you that information. I'm on the board of directors of Centerlink, which is the National LGBT Community Centers Network. They would have more of that information. I do know in the state of California, before I left there, that social services was able to start dropping in on some of these camps. I think it is important to remember that a lot of these, a lot of the therapies that are taking place are protected by religion. If they're seeing their priest, for example, and their priest is giving them this, this information. Now you're in a different ballgame than a certified therapist. You know, than a certified therapist at the city level or a business, right? And so a lot of these camps, for example, were religious camps. And if they've got the cross out front, then it makes it more difficult for social services to come in or to dictate what happens in those circumstances. So there, there are serious challenges to what we're talking about here. But if they have a license and they are licensed not as a religious organization, although I could talk to you for another hour about that. But as far as what we can do, then we got to do it. It also just sends the right, it sends the right message, right? If more municipalities do this, then maybe the folks up in Lansing will actually start to pay attention and take notice and do something statewide. Maybe.
So another question, didn't Oakland County ban conversion therapy and how, how have they been enforcing that?
Again, I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that. I've had my hands full turning affirmations around. I'm no longer the public policy director as I was in Los Angeles and on every single, you know, it's funny, you guys were talking about some of the things on your agenda and I had to smile because those are all the laws, the SBs that I dealt with in LA. But I'm not as close to it here since I've been back. But any questions that you do have, I can certainly get the answers to those. Jay Kaplan from the ACLU is a good friend of mine. He would know those answers and I'm happy to get you any more information that you can get. And I'm not.
Or I would say that, that as we assign our staff to research this subject, that they should be looking to Oakland County and, you know, find, because if we're going to have an ordinance, I wanted to have teeth. I mean, I want to, I want to get these people. So I think we need to make that the focus of what we do here. So anyway, thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Commissioner Douglas. I saw Commissioner Dubak with his hand raised.
Unless others have questions.
Any other questions for Mr. Garcia? Okay, no, Commissioner Dubak.
Thank you again for joining us, Mr. Garcia. Really appreciate your input and I'm glad we're able to move forward with this today. Briefly to Commissioner Douglas's question, I believe Oakland County passed a resolution in support of Senator McMorro's bill. I don't, I don't believe they have a law on the books. I think it was, it was urging the legislature to get that bill moving. But I'm not a hundred percent, but I'm pretty sure that's what they did.
Okay, that makes sense.
And, you know, to that point, you know, I do want to give credit for Senator McMorro for championing this at the state level to the extent possible. But once again, we're, we're Lansing and the majority running the legislature have not acted on this in the same way we passed our human rights ordinance to protect our LGBTQ brothers and sisters from discrimination. I think it is appropriate for us to take action on this and ban this practice in Royal Oak. June is Pride Month and sadly, we did not get to host our family pride event and this is, you know. It's a disappointment we weren't able to do that, but this is something we can do to stand in solidarity with our residents. So with that, I will move to direct the city attorney to bring us an ordinance, a draft ordinance banning conversion therapy in the city of Royal Oak.
Motion by Commissioner Dubak, seconded by Commissioner Macy. Discussion. Commissioner Macy?
I just also want to thank Mr. Garcia for his illuminating and terrifying testimonial here today about what this practice is like. I hope we can get it, we can spread it throughout Michigan, get the ball rolling.
Anybody else? I'd also like to thank Mr. Garcia and I'd like to thank Commissioner Dubak, Commissioner Macy for also bringing this forward. You know, just when we go back and take a look, I know a couple of commissioners have expressed this thing needs said teeth. And it certainly has to have a penalty that matches the horrific nature of soon-to-be violations of the law here in, in the city of Royal Oak. So for me, I'm interested in making sure that this isn't just symbolic, but that we can act on it and that it matters and it, and the penalty, you know, matches the, the crime and that, you know, it prevents people from wanting to do this or entertain it or take the risk in the city of Royal Oak, that they'll think twice about this happening because, you know, we're looking at to the maximum extent that we can putting a penalty out there that, that addresses this matter for what it is. So with that, I will, there's no other discussion. I'll call for the vote. I'll start up top, not that you guys have the same screen as me, but Commissioner Gibbs?
Yes.
Commissioner Prush?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavasser?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, so our staff will be working hard on this and Mr. Garcia, I imagine if they have any questions or need to be pointed to any resources that, that our city could reach out to, to you and get connected to the right people to help us along this journey.
We can find any answer you need.
Thank you so much. Thank you again for tonight. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Thank you all.
All right. That brings us to item number nine, Girl Scout Troop seven, six, two, four, nine, request to install a community food pantry. All right, I think I'm going to hand this over to Mr. Brake to kick it off, but I see we have some special guests here tonight. So Mr. Brake?
Oh, okay. Mayor and city commission, very pleased and to introduce this agenda item for you. And so the Girl Scout Troop seventy-six, two, forty-nine is earning their badge called Agent of Change. This consists of fourteen girls, the fourth grade at the Oak Ridge Elementary School that they are proposing to install a community food pantry. And this is really a tremendous community effort as Lowe's has provided the materials to construct this food pantry. The pantry consists of non-perishable foods and toiletries that would be made available to the community. Ordinarily, when such a type of facility or arrangement is placed on public property that we would require a license agreement. Then this instance that it provides not only a community good, but also a nice life learning project for these students and that we waive these requirements. And city staff will work with the, the Girl Scout troops to find an appropriate location. And the Scouters Community Center is one of the potential locations. So that is the summary of this and I think we have some special guests here to, to introduce.
Wow, I am so excited to see the great participation tonight. This is an amazing idea. Wow, wow. How proud are you guys and how proud are your parents and how proud is the city of Royal Oak that this is in front of us here tonight? Goodness. Those are any of the Girl Scouts that want to kind of bring us up to speed, maybe a little bit more detail about what you want to do and, and help learn a little bit more about the project?
I think we, we had prepared some comments. So Jess, do you want to start? They, they kind of know the order. They want to share some information.
Hello, my name is Jessica and we're from Girl Scout Troop seven, six, two, four, nine from Oak Ridge Elementary School. We're here to talk about our food pantry idea.
All right, Penny, you ready?
Penny can't make it, so Olivia is going to.
Oh, no, she's, she's here. She woke up.
Okay.
We, we have some, some sleepy girls, so.
So we decided, so we got a few things out that were really important, like homelessness and like scarcity and stuff like that. And so we thought of some ideas and then we've, or we voted on the one that we cared most about. And so we got homelessness picked. And then so we thought, we thought of some ideas and the top one was the little free pantry. So we picked that and it's really important to our Girl Scout troop.
Is Olivia here? She was going to share why it's so important to us.
The free little pantry is important because some people are less fortunate than others and they can't afford food and other essentials. So free is a start. Also, it can help teach the community to help others because that is one of the most important things in Troop seven, six, two, four, nine. Thank you for listening.
Go ahead, Winnie.
Hello, my name is Kenny and I think people in our Russian community should at least put non-perishable food into our pantry at least once or twice. If everyone helped out, we still be making a change in the afternoon. We would like permission from the city so that we can put up our free little pantry somewhere that is accessible to people who may need to use the pantry and also for people who may want to donate to the pantry.
Ms. Ella?
Thank you for letting us put up the pantry. And we're eager to but for you to let us put it up in the city of Royal Oak. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. All right, my goodness. You guys did an excellent job making your case. I think this is going to be a hard pressed for this commission. And I know just I'm very thankful as your neighbor that you guys have proposed this. I can tell you often people think about who you look up to as an example as being a grownup. Well, I can tell you this grownups looking up to you guys tonight. I really, really, you guys are inspiring me. You are the example that I want to live up to tonight for sure. So I'm very grateful for, I think you even mentioned it as being an example. And I can tell you, these grownups here are looking up to you right now. So very nice that you proposed this. All right, are there any questions for the Oak Ridge Girl Scouts? Commissioner Dubak, is this about cookies?
No, Mayor, I just wanted to add to your comments and tell you all you did such an amazing job. And I talked to my kids a lot about leadership and about it being about service and making the world better than you found it. And you guys are doing that in a big way tonight and I'm really appreciative that you're here. It's awesome.
Commissioner Prush?
I would just like to say that I was a Girl Scout a very, very long time ago. And I remember having to earn badges like for cooking or for sewing or for other kinds of domestic things that back in the day, women's were expected to do and those were basically their responsibilities. Obviously, the law has changed in the last decades, thankfully, thankfully. And I just have to say as a former Girl Scout that I am just so proud of you guys. You're taking a leadership role. You are learning about your community and about your country and you're, you're determining to do important things. And that's exactly what we all should be doing. So you are, you're just a tremendous example for all of us and we are all so, so, so proud of you. And we just can't wait to see this thing actually come into reality. So fantastic, fantastic job. Congratulations.
Commissioner Macy?
I echo what everyone else has said, but I also want to commend you for coming on this tonight and being brave and speaking up and letting your voices be heard by all of us. It's very, as has been said, inspiring and it takes a lot of courage. Nice, nicely done. I hope you get also a public speaking badge in addition to your Agent of Change badge.
All right, anybody else? Well, we have a resolution in front of us here for a couple resolutions. Our, I'll say Commissioner Prush, the former Girl Scout.
I'll move the approvalless resolution which would give permission to erect a a small food pantry on city property. I think that's the first resolution.
We have a motion by Commissioner Prush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubak? Okay, any discussion on this first resolution? All right, no discussion. I will call for the vote. We'll start at the top. Commissioner Gibbs?
Yes.
Commissioner Prush?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavasser?
Yes.
That's a unanimous vote on the first resolution. Good job. Fifty percent there. All right, does anyone want to move the second resolution? Commissioner Prush?
I'll move approval of the resolution which would allow us to go forward without the necessity of a license agreement for the location.
Okay, we have motion by Commissioner Prush. We have a second by Commissioner Macy with the. Okay, we have motion by Commissioner Perush. We have a second by Commissioner Macy with the fast hand. All right, we'll start the vote from the bottom of my screen. Commissioner Lavasser?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubac?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Your Perush?
Yes.
Your Gibbs?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That's two unanimous votes from the Royal Oak City Commission. Wow! You guys should also get a lobbying badge. My goodness gracious, you did an excellent job. That's so exciting. Wow, how proud are we of you? And you stayed up to, well, nine o'clock, not as late as we're usually here, so. We're really grateful. Any closing comments? Anything anyone wants to make before we move on to the next agenda item? Okay, well, we look forward to seeing the pantry go up and helping the people in need. And thank you so much for spending time with us here tonight, okay? All right, good night, everyone. Wow, how nice is that? All right. We are moving on to the next agenda item. Which is item number ten, which is the Michigan Liquor Control Commission Licensed Establishment Culinary Investments LLC. Request to amend the plan of operation. I think I saw Lieutenant Spencer floating around here at one point.
I'm here, Mr. Mayor. Good evening.
You got all video confirmation too, my goodness, wow!
Yes, sir. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, City Commissioners. This Police Department received a request from Culinary Investments, which is currently doing business as Mr. B's uh, at the address locations of two thirteen through two nineteen South Main Street to uh, change their plan of operation as part of an overall restructuring of their establishment. And uh, Mr. Propelak has has joined us this evening. Um, and he's requested the following changes, spelled out in the letter. Um, the first, the first floor is divided into three rooms. Two of the rooms uh, commonly known as the North Room and the Middle Room are gonna be changed to a restaurant called Alchemy. Uh, some hours of operation is, are are gonna change in that. Uh, whereas former Mr. B's Restaurant was open on Sunday from twelve PM to twelve AM. And then Monday through Saturday from eleven thirty AM to two AM. Alchemy is gonna be open uh, Wednesday through Sunday from five PM to two AM. Uh, the premise of Alchemy is going to be a chef-driven menu featuring unique farm-to-table dishes and craft cocktails. Uh, the capacity that is currently used by Mr. B's is two hundred and thirty-four. Uh, Mr. Propelak is going to reduce that down to uh, one hundred and seventy with seating for a hundred and sixty-nine uh, seated patrons. The South Room is going to be changed. Uh, the name is gonna change to Prep's Gaming Room and Nightclub. Um, it will operate as a full-service entertainment facility with a full-service bar, a limited snack menu, a new golf simulator and uh, some updated updated arcade games. Uh, there are hours of operation are gonna change to Tuesday through Sunday from eleven AM to two AM. Uh, the caveat there is that at nine PM, it's going to transition from a uh, from what Mr. Propelak uh, wants it to be a family-driven uh, entertainment facility. At nine PM, it's going to transition over to uh, a uh, nightclub facility with updated dress code. Um, the basement facility currently known as and will remain as Johnny Speakeasy while uh, stay the same. The hours on that, uh, Mr. Propelak has asked to change the hours of operation um, from Wednesday through Saturday from seven PM to one AM. He would like them changed from uh, Thursday through Sunday from five PM to two AM and then closed on Monday through Wednesday. Uh, the final overall capacity will be set by the Police Department after recommendations from both the building and fire departments. Um, the uh, applicant has made these requests as permanent changes to his establishment. He has made these changes with the current government COVID-nineteen uh, rules in mind uh, and will operate under the confines of those orders while the orders remain in effect. Uh, Mr. Propelak and Culinary Investments have been operating uh, for quite a while in the city. Uh, since January of two thousand and nineteen, the Police Department has responded to forty calls for service. And while that was a uh, trending increase in the calls for service since uh, January of two thousand and nineteen, Mr. Propelak has been uh, very proactive and works very collaboratively with the Police Department when issues come up with his establishment. So the Police Department has no objections to this uh, changes of request and if approved, the applicants would have to comply with all planning, zoning and building requirements and restrictions.
Thank you, Lieutenant Spencer. Any questions for Lieutenant Spencer? Okay, I see we have Chef Johnny on. John, how are you? John? We might not be able to hear you, John. No, we can't hear John.
Oh, there. Can you hear me?
Yeah, now we can hear you. Good. All right, what more do you have to tell us, sir?
I couldn't hear you. How are you?
Good, how are you doing today?
I'm doing great, thank you.
All right, we're just um, you know, uh, seeing if you have anything additional to add uh, for the commission to consider. Uh, Lieutenant Spencer kind of gave his rundown of the application and what's involved. Um, so not sure if you have any additional uh, things you wanna want to talk about. Uh, we'll give you that opportunity right now.
Well, you know, obviously, we're going to go, you know, economic trade, both from a business standpoint and from a government standpoint. And um, you know, we're trying our best to position ourselves to be successful in the future. And I think we're quite fortunate in regard to the fact that we have so much construction and economic growth going around around us. And um, hopefully, you know, by the beginning of next year, we're gonna start to build the impact of that. Um, so that's really kind of what's driven our strategy. Um, you know, we feel that uh, we're trying to position ourselves to be a contemporary business that is well-positioned for having a great medical center behind us and and having new condominiums up and down the street. And um, you know, I'm really quite excited about the fact that, you know, we're going to be opening a restaurant that is going to be creative with farm-to-table type uh, food and kind of leverage the success we've had in our speakeasy in terms of the type of content that we're providing to our customers. Um, and it it's, you know, it's kind of an extraordinary time and and you know, I think the city has been uh, remarkable in many regards. Um, from the DDA to the City Commission and and I can't tell you how much I appreciate the flexibility and the openness of mind people have had. Um, you know, I'm confident that we're gonna be successful, but you know, at the same time, we're working really hard and um, you know, this is a little bit of a a progressive strategy. I mean, we're essentially rebranding and opening a new restaurant. Um, but, you know, in in my case, when I bought Mr. B's six years ago, um, you know, I bought a brand that was thirty-five years old. And many of the Mr. B's that have existed, and there's several of them, you know, have closed down and have been at their end of their life cycle. And I have really wanted to reconcept it for quite a while. Um, but it's a really hard decision. You know, it's a very difficult decision because, you know, such an established brand, it has such an established history. Um, but yet, you know, you see the the overcapacity in the industry. You see the redundancy of the concept. And you say to yourself, you know, when do I actually, you know, pull the trigger to try to create a new concept? Well, I kind of look at this pandemic and the situation we're in as an opportunity. Um, because, you know, we're shut down anyway, so we're getting an opportunity to uh, grow and 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 do things that, you know, we would have had to shut down our business uh, to do this. And it would have been really, really hard to do that. And now we're kind of doing it during a period where we're getting support from the city, we're getting support from national government, the state government. Um, and it kind of prompted us to allow us to execute a strategy like this. Um, so I'm, you know, I'm really enthusiastic about it. I'm very excited about it. I I think that we're gonna bring something innovative to the city. I think it's going to be innovative in the sense of what we've done down in our speakeasy. At the same time, I think that uh, perhaps our gaming room and nightclub is gonna be uh, true to what Mr. B's has always been, a fun place for family and friends. Um, and uh, ultimately, we're gonna be subdivided into a little bit smaller venues, but it's very, very difficult to keep a venue which was Mr. B's at four hundred and seventy seats at one point, uh, filled. And um, so it's been our strategy for quite a while to kind of subdivide it into uh, smaller pieces that that um, are a little bit easier to keep filled. And uh, we're very enthusiastic about, you know, the future and and we're really super appreciative of the the support the administration and the police and the DDA have given us. Uh, cuz it's really quite, quite substantial, you know, and 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 uh, you know, I can't really express enough how much I appreciate the flexibility and the support the city is giving to the businesses. Um, because we're in a time of need and uh, we are, all are in this together and, you know, we have to succeed together, so. Um, you know, I'm all in for Royal Oak and and, you know, I work really hard every day for that and I think we will win, you know, so. Um, you know, that's all I really have to add.
We have any questions for uh, Commissioner Macy?
Uh, first of all, I just wanna commend Chef Johnny on making lemonade out of these coronavirus lemons. It's pretty amazing that you took advantage of this moment to do this rebrand. And I, one thing I was curious about is, obviously, you were thinking and talking about this already. If we hadn't had this shutdown, when do you think this would have come about? Like, what was your timeline originally?
Well, originally, I was planning on opening a uh, um, a New York-style deli uh, by the time that the uh, Medical Center opened. And doing this type of rebrand sometime later in two thousand and twenty-one. Um, but there were a number of strategic reasons to kind of move this up. And, you know, we are gonna have a, uh, I think a very cook-from-scratch, uh, very uh, user-friendly uh, taco and 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 nacho and hot dog bar in the nightclub, which will be available to people all day long, you know, families, friends, which will kind of semi-fulfill that purpose of what the deli was gonna do. Um, but yet allow us to to do the rest of the rebrand. So it, it didn't necessarily completely change our strategy, it just kind of moved the timing around. You know, um, to where we were able to take um, and put the bistro style upstairs. And we haven't given up on the idea of putting a deli in there, but it's just, it's changed our priorities, that's all.
Yeah, I think I think it sounds amazing, really innovative and interesting and unique in Royal Oak and um, uh, the other thing I was curious, I love the speakeasy. The other thing I was curious about was the mention of the um, dress code, upgraded dress code. Do I need to go shopping? What does this upgraded dress code look like?
Well, when I, when we say upgraded dress code, we're really talking more about the nightclub.
Right.
Um, you know, when we say an upgraded dress code, what we're saying is um, no sunglasses, uh, you have to have a belt on. Um, these aren't dramatic changes. We're just trying to make it a little bit, a little bit more formal.
Uh, Commissioner Perush?
Uh, your mention of a belt is a little scary, but that's not the question that I have. The question that I have is, you you talked about this a little bit, about segregating the total floor space into three separate units. And right now, or at least before you closed, you could pretty much free-flow from one end to the other, from north to south. That's, as I understand it, that's not going to be possible anymore. It's going to be three completely segregated spaces that will be separate entrances and and exits for the three separate spaces. Is, am I understanding that correctly?
Well, right now, we have two separate spaces because the speakeasy is already separate.
Right.
What we're really doing is dividing the bistro from the nightclub.
Okay.
That's really what we're doing. Um, two, we're gonna take, you know, Mr. B's is three separate addresses.
Right.
I mean, it's a very, very large space.
It's huge.
It's huge. And it's, it's, you know, have a uh, a bistro environment where you're serving um, you know, high craft cocktails and farm-to-table bistro-style food with a game room, um, you know, golf simulator and hot dogs and tacos and nachos. And have people flow back and forth, um, particularly when the nightclub starts because, you know, the music gets quite loud. It really gets loud. That's an understatement. It gets very loud. And you would not be able to have a comfortable dining environment in the bistro once the night started. Um, and that's really the big issue. The greatest that, because once the DJs get going, uh, not a lot of people are gonna wanna sit there and have a quiet meal and a cocktail.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, a question for uh, City Attorney Gillum. I see this is just a change to the plan of operation. It's it's, it's a sizable change, but this isn't required to have a public hearing, correct?
That's correct. No public hearing required.
So, we could just move, uh, if the commission desired for the resolution in front of us, uh, to approve the plan of operation change, and that's all that's needed. Any other questions? Uh, Commissioner Dubac?
Sorry, I thought you were looking for a motion.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm always looking for a motion.
I'll go for a broil.
All right, we have motion by Commissioner Dubac. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Perush? Uh, any discussion on the motion? I'll just add, you know, John, you you've constantly, since uh, you you came in into that space, have been looking for opportunities to improve, uh, try new things and uh, find opportunities to bring value to um, you know, the residents and consumers and and people that visit Royal Oak. So, um, we're excited to see uh, what you're gonna do. We know you're gonna be successful. And uh, we appreciate you uh, making an effort here in these uh, most challenging times, so. Uh, good luck, but uh, you know, with your um, drive, uh, I I know you're not gonna need it. So, um, I'll call for the vote. Oh, Commissioner Dubac, you had your hand up?
All right, I just wanna add that I'm I'm very pleased the speakeasy is not changing because I love it.
Yes. Not, not only do I like it, but I get a lot of street credit because there's a lot of folks that I have recommended it to that have saved their um, date night relationships with their spouses uh, by finding a new and cool and fun spot to go to, so. We get to enjoy it and also get a little street credit too. All right, I'll call for the vote. Um, we'll start with Commissioner Gibbs?
Yes.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Macy?
Yes.
Douglas? Douglas?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Uh, Commissioner Dubac?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavasser?
I'll vote yes, but I wanna remind people, we're supposed to keep on the download about that speakeasy.
You mean the one that doesn't exist we don't talk about? Uh, and I vote yes. Okay, John, you got a unanimous vote here. Good luck. Uh, Lieutenant Spencer, thank you as usual for all your research and and work into uh, looking into these um, uh, changes in operations. We appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. This brings us to item eleven, which is the May twenty-twenty Traffic Committee Resolutions. And I see Ms. Donahue on the... There she is, all right.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, tonight I have three resolutions for your consideration from the Royal Oak Citizens Traffic Committee. We had a meeting on Tuesday, May twenty-sixth, our first remote meeting, and it went pretty well. Um, so the first of the resolutions uh, has to do with a crosswalk that's near Oak Ridge Elementary. Um, currently, this is at the intersection of Bloomfield and Ardmore, and it's a standard T intersection where you have one stop sign. And then the through movement is, there is no stop sign there. Um, but there is a crosswalk that goes across Bloomfield there. And we've seen that pedestrians are using that particularly during school. But there is a crosswalk that goes across Bloomfield there, and we've seen that pedestrians are using that particularly during school morning and afternoon hours. And so for that reason, it meets the warrant for a stop sign at that location, so we're recommending to turn that into a three-way stop to allow for pedestrians to cross safely. The second resolution, that we had a request for South Wilson Avenue, which is a street that's parallel to Campbell Road, it's the first street to the west of Campbell. And there was a complaint that there's been increased traffic and higher speeds as a result of the road diet that we had on Campbell and then also the I seventy-five construction. However, when we actually did the study, we found that traffic volumes were quite low for a residential street. And the speeds were well within what you want to see for a twenty-five mile per hour zone. So, we're recommending denying that request. And then finally, we had a request to look at the neighborhood just to the west of Miningar Park. There was a request to install a couple of extra stop signs, which ultimately we did not feel met the warrant for a stop sign. Those were at Woodcrest Drive at Austin Avenue, and then also Maxwell Avenue at Austin. So, while it didn't meet that warrant for stop signs, we did notice that, you know, right down the road, there are two crossings over into the park where we have ramps directing people onto Maxwell Avenue, which is considered a major road and has a fair amount of traffic every day. And there's no, no signs there, there's no crosswalk, nothing to really warn drivers that pedestrians could be crossing. So, what we are recommending in this case is to put the six-inch white crosswalk striping at two locations and then the associated pedestrian crossing signs. So, that would be on Maxwell, at Crane Avenue, and at Austin Avenue. So, those are our three resolutions. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for Ms. Donahue? I think pretty succinct and underst. Mr. Macy.
Just briefly, I was wondering if Ms. Donahue could talk about how she, timeline-wise and traffic-wise thinks that the, as the construction moves forward, it will relieve some of this pressure on the coming off of ten-mile exits. Do you foresee that happening soon and kind of a lot or not?
It's kind of hard to say. It seems like traffic patterns are adjusting to the new normal that we have here. It's also hard to say because right, right now our traffic flows are so low that it seems great, you know, when you're trying to get off a ten-mile road. It's something we continue to monitor. Last year we did have one of our consultants go and retime the signals on Campbell to get that traffic moving a little bit smoother. And I myself noticed a pretty big change once we did that. So, we've, we've kind of done everything we can do to, to make Campbell a good alternative for people to get to, but maybe not, you know, the Woodward freeway-type cut-through street, which is not really what we want anyways for that one.
Yeah, it does, and I live right off Campbell, and I also noticed an incredible improvement in traffic, which had been really bad for a while, and I didn't know it was because of that.
Mr. Prush?
I was just going to move approval of these resolutions.
Motion by Commissioner Prush, is there a second? Thank it by Commissioner Douglas. Further discussion? All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. I'll start up top, Commissioner Gibbs.
Did you hear me? Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Duba?
Yes.
Commissioner Levaser?
Yeah.
Douglas?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay. Thank you to the Citizens Traffic Committee and to our Engineering Department for their efforts. Now to the next agenda item here. I apologize, one of my laptops is running a little slow. And it brings us to item twelve, which is approval of amendments to the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budgets. Ms. Rudd.
Mayor, City Commissioners, this is the final amendment for fiscal year nineteen twenty. There are numerous funds that we're requesting amendments for, including the General Fund and presently, seven special revenue funds. In addition, there are four enterprise funds that are not supported with the resolution as we only resolve on the General Fund and Special Revenue Funds. I, they are all itemized, all the additions or reductions. I can go over the more significant ones if you'd like, and the funds that are supported by resolution. Or not, whichever you prefer.
Any preference by the commission? Commissioner Levaser?
Yeah, I'd like to hear her go over some of the more significant changes.
Go ahead, Commissioner, or go ahead, Ms. Rudd.
For the General Fund, criminal court revenue and probation revenue are down approximately one million, one hundred and fifteen thousand. Right-of-way permit revenue increased a hundred thousand dollars, and there is an offsetting expenditure in the Engineering Department for that revenue that we'll get to momentarily. And then the parking violation revenue is down fifty thousand dollars. State shared revenue reducing by four hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. And the Michigan Drug Court Grant increasing by a hundred thousand dollars. We do not budget for that positions revenue until we're assured that we're going to have the grant. And then in the middle of the page, that first page, so use of fund balance is increasing one million, five hundred and ten thousand dollars. And on the expenditure side, under general government contracted legal in the court cost center is decreasing by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars now because these costs are accounted for in the new Indian Defense Fund. Personnel costs for City Manager's Office decreasing by a hundred thousand dollars due to the vacancies. And then city office building increasing by forty-five thousand dollars. And as we've had the maintenance workers located over the EPS doing additional work here on the General Fund-related buildings. And then for Public Works, street lighting, electricity costs are increasing two hundred thousand dollars. DTE performed an audit and found some lights that were not assigned to the city that shouldn't have been assigned to the city. Unfortunately, so that's an increase of two hundred thousand dollars. And then briefly mentioned, the Engineering Department costs are increasing a hundred thousand dollars for personnel, but there is a right-of-way permit revenue job, so. Real quickly, Major Road Fund, we're decreasing Act of Year One revenue by a hundred and ninety-nine thousand. And so use of fund balance for that fund will be approximately, is budgeted at a hundred and sixty-three thousand. And then the Public Safety Fund, we had an anonymous donation of four hundred thousand dollars. And that is going towards an increased contribution to the pension system for the unfunded liability of the same amount, four hundred thousand dollars. And that causes an actual contribution to fund balance in that fund of about fifteen thousand dollars. And then the DDA Operating Fund, which is the Milage Fund, has an increase of thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars, and that's for the shuttle service. And then State Construction Code Fund increasing permit revenue by eight hundred and five thousand dollars and make a total contribution of fund balance of about one point one million. And then Senior Citizens Fund, actually the revenue reductions and the and the expenditure reductions net, and so that total use of fund balance will remain at two hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. And we have the police grants, there are numerous forfeiture donations and grants that are increasing. And then we have small increases for the K nine unit. And those net out to be a total use of fund balance of one million, two hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, and most of that is a transfer to the Rock Construction Fund for their donation to the new police station. And then miscellaneous grants is increasing twelve hundred dollars, and that's for the Leeds Grant Certification. And then the remainder of the funds are the enterprise funds that aren't supported with the one.
Any questions for Ms. Rudd? Commissioner Levaser?
Ms. Rudd, just to make sure I understand this correctly, last year this time, we projected a use of about two point eight million dollars in, in general fund balance, and we actually used four point, almost four point four million in, in general fund balance?
The original budget was about two point nine, two million, eight eighty-five.
All right, but we ended up using almost four point four million out of our general fund, our general fund balance instead?
Uh, no, that is what the budget is. With these amendments up to the four million, three ninety-six that you're seeing there on the letter. However, revenues are going to come in a little better because we have to budget revenues that are reasonably assured. So, they're going to come in a little better and our expenditures cannot go over budget, so our expenditures are going to come in a little better, so a little lower. So, the projected budget that you saw during the budget workshops for the end of this fiscal year was more about three point eight million. So, we're probably going to be closer to three point eight.
All right, so, so last year we projected two point nine, and it looks like it's probably going to be closer to three point eight, if I'm understanding correctly.
Yeah.
And that's not, that's not money being shuffled from one city Royal Oak account to another, that's actual less cash we have on hand?
Correct.
Okay. Now, with regard to the auto parking fund, am I reading this correct, that we have an unanticipated seven hundred and eighty-one dollars, seven hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars of usage out of the, the fund balance in the auto parking fund?
Um, no, we call that retained earnings because depreciation is calculated on the expenditure side. So, it's real, it's not real dollars going out. It's not like the General Fund. This is full accrual accounting and it has, like I said, depreciation. And then also, it accounts for bond expenditures differently on the principal. So, you can't really look at it that way on the, on the enterprise funds. It's not as clear as it is in the General Fund.
Okay, but if I'm reading this correct, we have, say, one point two million dollars less in revenue coming in from parking than anticipated?
Uh, yeah, that's correct.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Let me see, any other questions? Are they, are there any motions, perhaps? Commissioner Prush?
I'll move approval of these budget amendments.
Second? Second by Commissioner Macy. All right, I'll call for the vote. I'll start up the top, Commissioner Gibbs.
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Duba?
Yes.
Commissioner Levaser?
Yeah.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Prush?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, thank you, Ms. Rudd. Give me a second here. Brings us to item thirteen, which is approval of Planning Commission recommendation for proposed residential accessory off-street parking lot at two seventeen.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. You do have a recommendation from the Planning Commission to approve an off-street residential accessory parking lot at the property at two seventeen Knoll Street. That property is just east of the courthouse. It's at the end of Third Street. You're familiar with that location. Because it is a property that's owned one family residential, it does have a psychologist's office on it. The process for residential accessory off-street parking lots is for the Planning Commission to hold a public hearing, which they did at their June ninth meeting, and provide the City Commission with a recommendation on the proposal. The Planning Commission is recommending approval to the commission. There is a resolution at the part of the commission letter, if the City Commission is supportive of it. Basically, the request is to put a twenty-two-space parking lot, surface lot, at the south end of this property, south of the existing structure that's on site. Access to that property would be from Third Street at the end of Knolls, where they kind of tee together into the site for those twenty-two spaces. Currently, the doctor's office has parking spaces that are located on city property that are assigned and sign is restricted for patients and customers of that facility along the east side of the city's property, again, just east and behind the courthouse. These spaces would replace those and beyond his private property. It does have screening along the south side of the, the site in terms of providing vinyl privacy fence along the south part of the parking lot, if you see the site plan. Along the west side of the drive entrance, there are a row of arbivites to provide screening from the private parking lots and the court parking that are east of the driveway. I think with that, I will stop and see if there's any questions of me. I believe Dr. Keeler or Josh Keeler may be participating in the meeting as well.
Thank you, Mr. Twing. Any questions for Mr. Twing? I saw Commissioner Macy with her hand up. Commissioner Macy?
Yeah, I don't know if you heard, Mr. Twing, we had a public commenter who is the same person who has apparently written a letter as well to the Planning Commission. And it was a little hard, I was trying to look at the map while he was talking, I don't know that I quite understand it, but I think he's the one who they the alley will run right along his house, or is right, very close to where his house is. And he was saying that he had requested to kind of shift it over to the other side of that lane. And again, I'm not even sure I'm looking at the right spot on this, but I think, I think I am, and I think it's what you just said. The west side, there's Arbivite that is shielding from the parking lot. But wouldn't it make more sense to have it not shielded from the parking lot and shielded instead from the house on the right side? I just wonder if that had been considered as, as we were looking at this?
Well, it did come up at the Planning Commission meeting. I believe it was addressed by the Keelers as well, in the sense that their proposal was to have it along the west side to screen and provide privacy as part of their operation. So, they, it was kind of the chosen part of the design for the petitioner to provide privacy. So, it was, it was brought up in the same letters and things were distributed. The recommendation that was forwarded is to plan as submitted, so.
Mr. Prush?
I'm looking at the, at the diagram of the parcel that is on the memo that stated May twenty-eight. And the driveway part that comes out toward Third Street, that is all currently public property or public street and extension, it is Knoll Street there, extending all the way to Third?
No, it's privately owned by the Keelers. It's not property.
Okay. And it's not now used for access at all to those properties that are further north on Knolls? It's, it's blocked off?
Yeah, there's, there's no, the only driveway that's on it now is one is utilized by, I believe, the person that called earlier, they installed a driveway out to it, even though it's private property owned by the Keelers, they installed a driveway access curb to it and are driving up and down it. But it is private property, it's not city property or public right-of-way.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Levaser?
I, I watched the Planning Commission discussion on this, and, and I don't recall there being a lot of discussion on the, if, if any discussion on, on the neighbor's suggestion to shift, you know, something over ten feet. And I just wanted to get a sense of, of whether that was, you know, to what degree that was discussed, and how feasible that is with, with the, with the plan as the and how feasible that is with, with the, with the plan as the property owner has as presented.
Well, I, I guess from my, my standpoint, it's, it's up to the property owner to propose what they want to propose. I don't know that there's 10 feet to move it over. There, there may be. It could, the driveway could shift to the, to the west. But I'm not sure that's where the property owner wants to shift it. So I'd leave that up to them. It, it was briefly discussed. I would agree. There was not a great deal of conversation.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As a representing the City Commission on the Planning Commission, we struggled with this. It is not, there is no ideal solution here. But the fact is that the, the landowner, the only way they cannot be landlocked is from the vacation of Noel Street, which is what the city has done. And that's really their only access point into the property. I don't recall an extensive discussion of, of moving the arborvitae from the west edge of their driveway to the east edge of their driveway. That's not an unreasonable speculation, but again, just not something I remembered as, as the Planning Commission discussing at any length. My memory could be faulty on that. So yeah, we also hate to see the number of trees that will have to be removed from this property. And we discussed the fact that the city's tree ordinance may require a two-to-one replacement for trees lost on a development site. But if there's no room on that site for replacement, we don't have a provision that would ask that property owner to replace trees elsewhere in the city. So I would just put that out there as something the City Commission should consider at a, at another time. But Mr. Twing did say that the petitioner is with us. Perhaps he could talk about the positioning of the arborvitae along that driveway. It seems perhaps immaterial if they're on the east side or the west side, he will incur that expense anyway. But perhaps we could do that, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'll give, if the petitioner is ready to discuss, notwithstanding any other questions for Mr. Twing. Okay, I see we have the petitioners online. Maybe you can enlighten us a little bit more about what you, I know you explained it to Commissioner Douglas and I and the other planning commissioners, but maybe a quick introduction and then really help us understand the, the arborvitae west location of the driveway there on your, on your inbound drive-in.
Yes, I'd be happy to. As I understand it, actually, all of the plans were worked up by Planning Department and I, Engineering Division. I think you might be interested in some of the history leading up to this problem. I have been providing psychological services, me and my staff, for the last 60 years in the city. For the first 20, we worked out of a building on South Washington. That was part of a parcel that the city decided to purchase and sell to a developer to build condominiums. Forced to move, the city put a reserve bid on this property on Knowles. It was being sold by the Hilsinger family. And with a great deal of stress and duress, we moved temporarily, worked out of the historic house on the property until I was able to have the office building built in 1995. It's worked out well for our clients. It was a considerable effort. Because the previous building had 45 parking places. This, I think that was part of the city's reasoning and providing these parking places on the city property. With the building of the police station, we've been reduced tremendously. Half of my property is blocked out by construction fence. And I've had to turn away potential tenants and other professionals because I do not have enough parking. We're down seven places at this point. So Tim approached us with this plan from the city. And we certainly support the plan as advanced by planning. I have a bit of ambivalence as the mayor quite wisely picked up in the planning meeting. I've tried very hard to keep this property very much as it was when I first moved here. I've been able to have the house designated as historic, both the city and the state. I've been trying to keep it as pretty much all garden and trees. Any of the commissioners are welcome to come and visit at any time and and familiarize themselves with the project. But we're faced with the real dilemma. I have to have parking for my professional staff and our patients. Patients are often under stress. We do our best to keep our work confidential. So we really do require parking and this seems like the best plan, although I have very mixed feelings as I've already shared with you, so. But I don't see any other solution unless we are able to continue to use the, the places we're currently using. I hope that. Well, okay. Yeah, thank you very much. We're not able to hear.
Yeah, it's my fault. I was on mute. Commissioner Macy, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Doctor. I just wanted to ask about specifically the placement of the driveway. So in that, within that area that it's, that it's coming up, it sounds like part of it will be a driveway and part of it will be some plants that are shielding from, from view. So we had the person who lives at the house right adjacent to that request that the driveway be shifted to the, I guess it's the west side, to be farther away from his property stating that it would be in fact only a few feet from his property if it stayed on the right side. Do you have an opinion on the left versus the right side of that, of that drive?
I'm sorry, you asking the, are you asking Dr. Keeler that question?
Yeah, sorry, that was for Dr. Keeler. Can I ask him a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Of course. I would have to study it a bit. At this point, I wouldn't have a reservation provided it. It, it would work out for both people. I think screening for that neighbor would be important. She has used this now for quite a long time as her driveway. And also installed the fence without my permission, blocking my property first. But I would certainly want to do whatever I can to make it as easy as possible on the neighbor.
I would, I would like to add something. I am Dr. James Keeler's son as well, and I met with Tim at all the meetings and I've been kind of helping my dad with some of the technical sides of this, like this Zoom call. It's not his, his wheelhouse. Exactly. But one of, one of the issues we have with that neighbor's complaint and that we've addressed at previous meetings is that is my father's property. And she at one point asked if she could use that property and my father said no. She still went ahead and built a garage that is accessed on the side basically on that property. And I think that in the last meeting, she had wrote a letter that said something like it has a very beautiful country road look to it. The reason why it has a country road is because she can't pave it because it's not her property. And, and my father also mentioned that she went so far as to put a fence up blocking him from his own property. Reaching a point where we want, we aesthetically want it pleasing. We want it to work for my father's patients to be able to get in and out there. But the reality is, again, is that, you know, if she wants to build a fence or something along that line, that's fine. That's gonna be another discussion with her even having access in that area.
Yeah, I, I had proposed that she have her driveway on the other side of the house, but she declined that. So she just basically went ahead and used that property. But we're faced with a dilemma now of needing parking for our patients and for our staff. And there's been quite, as you can imagine with the construction, there's been an enormous crunch of land in this area and parking places. So we've had a real struggle. Now, that goes back to the beginning of the building, actually of the courthouse, as well as the police station. And I often wonder why the city decided to have me purchase this land because it's been no end of struggle. But we do need parking. That's vital. And we do need the confidentiality of, for our clients. Thank you.
Commissioner Labasser?
Doctor, how much time do you think you would need to take to consider whether or not moving the driveway toward the west would be feasible for this?
Well, if, if Tim could do some drawings for me as he prepared all of the drawings, we'd be able to take a look and see how realistic that is. I, I would think I could do it very quickly. That's, I certainly would not want to delay this. This needs to be done.
I also think it's important to know there's, there's a dumpster on site. So there's going to have to be clearance and space for a truck to get up in there, in and out. So that is something else that there, there'll have to be enough space. And again, that's something that Tim, Tim can tell us and any of the engineers could tell us exactly what the sizing should be of that driveway.
You might like to address these questions, some of them to Tim, who really has known the entire plan.
Right. And, and question for Mr. Twing and Mr. Gilliam. I note that one of our options here is to approve the special land use permit and associated site plan with or without modification. Would it be feasible for us to approve it with the movement of the driveway to the west? And then if it turns out it's not feasible and the doctor comes back to us sometime soon, reconsider it without going back to planning?
I think we'd have to see the drawings first.
I would think so. Maybe we could address this question to Tim as well so that we, because he'd have a better sense of how realistic that is than I would. Yeah, depends on the amount of space. Are, are you able to ask Tim Twing to weigh in on this?
Yeah, I'm on, I'm on the phone. I was just waiting for the discussion to come down. If, yes, you, as a commission, you have the final say on it. You, you can take the Planning Commission's recommendation and modify it. If you wanted it moved to the west, we would, we would move it. We would obviously do that. The concern I would have would be to, if you approve it with it moved, under what proviso would it stay as it is? That the Keelers object to the move? And then it would stay in its current location? I would, I would ask his staff some clarity on, you know, your preferred option is moving it west, but if, if it can't be done or, or the Keelers don't want to do it, then this would be acceptable?
But what, what I'm kind of anticipating here is that we approve it with that modification. But certainly if the doctors come back to us and said, hey, look, we, we thought it through and it just doesn't work. Doesn't mean that we're approving it as is, but it could come back to the commission for us to reconsider this decision tonight. I'm asking Mr. Gilliam and Mr. Twing whether that's procedurally something that we can do.
Commissioner, I don't have an issue with that. If, if you're talking about modifying plans based upon the recommendation that you've received from the Planning Commission tonight, with the understanding that if those plans don't work and the, the doctor ends up finding that those modifications will not work for his practice, that you would then basically default to the recommendation that came from the Planning Commission. I don't see an issue with that procedurally. I do not see any reason for that I have to go back to the Planning Commission. No.
Okay, but just to be clear, my, my question isn't saying it would default back to the recommendation from the Plan Commission. Because that's something I would want this commission to consider further, say, two weeks down the road or whatever the case, and not just give it a thumbs up tonight. I mean, we, I want to see if this can be moved, if that's feasible and if so, great, happy to approve it. If it can't be moved, I'd like to kind of understand a little bit more about the reasons why it can't be moved before simply approving what the Plan Commission has recommended.
So in other words, to reconsider, if you took action tonight and then to be able to reconsider at that, for example, your next meeting, potentially, without having to go back to the Planning Commission? Yeah, I don't see an issue, I don't see an issue with that at all.
I don't, I don't either. And, and that answered my question as well, is you're, you would be approving it, moving it some distance to the west. I'm not sure what distance that is at this point. And whether or not because of it's moved too far to the west, there would be no screening between the parking lot to the west, which is partly the court and partly a private parking lot in this driveway. You'd have to maintain some setback there to provide any sort of screening on that side. And I do believe that was one of the items that the Keelers requested when we've had meetings over the time was to have screening along that west side. So I don't want to prolong this, but it's, the reason it's on the west side is because there was a request for screening on the west side.
Macy?
So we're, we're gonna leave it to your wizardry, Mr. Twing, to see if this, if you can draw, drop something that makes, makes all parties happy, that magical, that magical drawing that will be perfect for all involved. And I actually think if you were to talk to the neighbor, maybe, and just kind of give them some of the boundaries and say, look, this is possible, this is not. And I just want to make it clear to the Dr. Keeler that I, I think everybody here understands this is your property, understands that there has been some use of your property that was not approved by you. Very sympathetic to that. I think we understand that you need parking and you need it soon. We're all, I, I believe, the commission seems to be all on board with making that work for you. And I think the issue that we're talking about right now is just seeing if we can mend fences a little bit with this neighbor to have it so that everybody, there's no, there's no hard feelings going forward and everyone can get what they need out of this change, so. But again, I think we all understand that it's your property and we're gonna get you that parking one way or the other.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Bruch?
I'm also very persuaded by the doctor's argument that patients coming in and out of that area need privacy. And it's not only the lot itself, but also the ingress and egress to the parking lot in the back. Just because it is such a, a public area with a court right there and a lot of other commercial activity right behind them. So I'm not willing to give up the type of screening that they think is necessary in order to enhance that privacy as much as possible. And if that means that the screening stays on the west side, regardless of the width of the egress and ingress area, then I would strongly favor having it remain there. At this point in time, I think the privacy of the patients coming in and out of the area is more important than having additional screening that is two or three feet closer to the neighbors. Given, given the history of, of the interaction between the neighbors and the doctor and the, and the issues that have arisen over time. I'm not giving credence definitely to his historical perspective of what has gone on between them. I'm, I'm less favorably inclined to bend over backwards for the neighbor at this point. Let's put it that way.
Commissioner Macy?
Yeah, I mean, I understand. I agree with Commissioner Bruch. I just, I want, do want to say that there's different kinds of screening and that's why we're gonna have Mr. Twing, Twing work his wizardry. And also I think talking, just if Mr. Twing would talk to the neighbor, I mean, part of what I'm thinking as I look at this picture is if the neighbor's driveway is right there, don't they want it to go out onto the paved street? So it seems like there are ways that this could be made to work for that neighbor without increasing any animosity and by letting, and letting the neighbor know that some of the fence is gonna have to go. I don't know, I just, I'm putting it in Mr. Twing's hands to, to make it work.
So Commissioner Macy, what does that look like in form of motion?
Okay, I think it looks like a motion that if Mr. Twing can work this out to the satisfaction of that neighbor, then we approve this resolution. And if not, it comes back before us in two weeks. Is that a resolution?
We have a, Commissioner Labasser, is that a second?
A second.
Okay. Just for clarity purposes for Mr. Twing, he's a highly intelligent person. But some of the motion is, you know, to the satisfaction of, you know, I always wonder what that means. Are you, are you speaking specifically to the arrangement of the driveway, whether or not it could be pushed farther west and get the right screening that the petitioners need or, or a different type of screening and trying to make the best accommodation possible in that process for the, the neighbor to.
And and trying to make the best accommodation possible in that process for the the neighbor to the south and east.
Yes, that's why I didn't want to make the motion, because it's kind of hard to be specific about what we're looking for here.
But you're really talking driveway issue, right?
Right.
And so if the if it is made, then the presumption is it's approved. And, you know, it can move forward, but if a resolution can't come, then it will come back here in two weeks for us to. Make a final call on the original plan or or not. I mean, it's not a perfect res, it's not a perfect motion, but this isn't a perfect situation. Mr. Twing, do you, based on that motion, do you think you have enough clarity?
Yeah, basically, you're postponing it for two weeks to work out a solution. So, no, I'm fine with it.
Okay. Anybody else? Any discussion? All right. Well, I will call for a vote, starting from what I see on my screen at the bottom. Commissioner Gibbs?
I agree with that. Yes.
Commissioner Bruce?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. LeBassar?
Yeah.
Mr. Dubach?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay. So maybe maybe this will be done. We'll see in two weeks, but I don't see this going beyond two weeks to to to, you know, move forward. So. We really appreciate Dr. Keeler and Josh on the phone or on the Zoom tonight. So hopefully we'll get some relief to the entire situation here soon.
We're very grateful for the city's assistance in this. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. So this brings us to the next agenda item, which is the approval of a license agreement, eleven mile parking. Structure signage. And Mr. Gillum, your name is on the circle. Mr. Gillum, do you mind unmuting? I'm trying to read your lips, but I'm getting used to you without a beard, so it's harder to read your lips now.
Yeah, well, it's not easy being in the witness protection program, let me tell you. Yeah, no, thank you. Yeah, I had forgotten I was on mute. What you have before you right now is a proposed license agreement. That would allow Henry Ford Health Systems to place two signs on the eleven mile parking structure. One on the north side of the deck, the other on the south side of the deck. The design of the signs, including the size of the signs. Is shown in Exhibit C to the proposed license agreement, which is the last couple pages of the agreement. We have Kathy Wishman from the Sign Company, the consultant, is here if you have specific questions about the signage. Otherwise, the recommendation that's contained in the memorandum is to approve the license agreement. And to allow the mayor and city clerk to execute the same on behalf of the city.
Any questions for Mr. Gillum or Ms. Wishman? Okay, all right, no questions. Commissioner Douglas? Commissioner Douglas, do you mind unmuting? Sorry.
All right. I am of approval of the agreement.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas. We have a second by Commissioner Perush. Discussion?
Yes, we saw this at the planning commission on a couple of occasions. And I'm happy to see that the staff have come to what I think is a fair opportunity. For Henry Ford's patients, customers to be able to find them without having it look like they own the garage. I think that was the challenge and I think we've met it in a proper way and I'm I'm pleased to see this.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, you got an estimated two hundred thousand people here coming to visit. You know, the building when it's done and probably not all of those folks are going to be from Royal Oak. And I kind of, as a wayfinding message, it's important. And I think like Commissioner Douglas said, that it's not overtaking and distracting from the fact that this truly is public parking. All right, any? Any other discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Gibbs?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. LeBassar?
Yeah.
Mr. Dubach?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
I vote yes. Thank you, Ms. Wishman, for joining.
Thank you. You guys made it very easy, but we really appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Have a good one.
You too.
All right, that brings us to item number fifteen, which is the approval of an interlocal agreement with Oakland County for coronavirus aid relief. And Economic Security Act. And I believe this is Mr. Gillum or Mr. Brake?
Commissioners, this was my memo, so I can start out. I'm sure if Mr. Brake has anything to add, he can jump in. He and I were on a conference call last week with staff from the county executive office. To discuss the distribution of the county share of CARES funding. As I believe Senator McMaro mentioned in her earlier comments tonight. There were a number of restrictions that were in place is to how CARES funding can be used. And who could use the CARES funding also? Initially, there is, I understand, there was a small allocation of CARES funding that was reserved for. Much larger communities across the country. I think Detroit and maybe one or two other communities in. In Michigan were eligible for that funding directly. But Royal Oak is not one of those communities that's big enough to get share of that piece of the pie. What's going on now is that the county board of commissioners have taken a portion of the CARES funding. That the county has received and have allocated that for distribution to cities, townships and villages. Within Oakland County. So although we're not eligible for that funding directly, the county has indicated that. It's willing to make some of that money eligible to be passed along to Royal Oak and to other communities. The manner in which we can use the funding is still subject to the same limitations the county is under. And for that matter, limitations that the state is under for its share of the CARES funding. Most notably, the money cannot be used to plug revenue holes in our budget. But the money could be used to pay for or reimburse the city for expenses. That have arisen related to COVID that were not part of our budget as of the date that the CARES funding went into a play, went into into effect. So the county is indicating that in order for a community to participate in the distribution of the CARES funding. They need to have an interlocal agreement in place that lays out the parameters. That is the agreement that you have in front of you tonight, and we would recommend approval of the agreement.
Questions for Mr. Gillum? Mr. Bruce?
Mr. Gillum or Mr. Brake, could you give us some examples of expenditures that the city might have accrued? That are eligible for reimbursement with these funds? I I'm kind of imagining some, maybe some. Repurposing or or or. Dividing up of spaces in City Hall with protective equipment and so on and so forth. So that with the reopening, you can you can employ those things that are required by OSHA and and the Michigan Health Department. But can you give us some examples of things that we can spend the money on?
Paul, I'll I'll jump in. I'll start, but feel free to jump in that some of the things that that have been discussed. Subject to any money that's received directly from FEMA. So for example, if we apply to FEMA for reimbursement, for example, of some of our public safety costs. If we get money from FEMA, we're not allowed to get extra money from the county. But the same kind of expenses that we're asking FEMA to reimburse us for. So a public safety cost, overtime costs for the police department, for the fire department. Plus a personal protective equipment, things like that would be eligible. The the discussion during the meeting last week was that. That kind of perked our interest was if, in fact, there are construction costs. So specifically associated with the new police station and the new city hall. That can be directly attributed to delays because of COVID. County has indicated that from their perspective, that is money that we could ask for reimbursement for or for payment for. So we're working with our consultants at PMC. In turn, they're working with Cole Assani O'Brien to put a detailed list together of increased costs resulting from COVID. Again, it's our intention to obtain reimbursement for that. And then, as you indicated, if there are additional steps that we have to take, either here at City Hall, the old City Hall. Or at the new City Hall, in terms of sneeze guards, Plexigress, screening, things like that. Again, specifically because of COVID, we didn't anticipate having to do. Those are items that we should be able to request payment for as well.
So the the only thing that I would add is there's not a guarantee that we will receive these funds. But at least by having the agreement in place that we can begin the discussion. But I would agree with Mr. Gillum on the examples and and especially the the costs that are related to the. Delays associated with the construction of the City Hall and the police station directly related to COVID. That that's what really got our attention. So we want to engage in that in that conversation. Remain optimistic that we can offset some of our additional costs. Any other questions for Mr. Brake or Mr. Gillum?
I'm of approval of the resolution approving this agreement.
Second by Commissioner Douglas. Any discussion on the motion? Done, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Dubach?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Bruce?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbs? No? Mr. Gibbs?
Oh, I I couldn't hear you. Yes, I couldn't hear you. Yes.
Commissioner LeBassar?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll execute the contract and start looking at our finances a little bit more to see the impacts. And I appreciate the county weighing in on supporting communities within the great county of Oakland, so. All right. This brings us to the next agenda item, which is the approval of reopening of city facilities and resumption of nonessential services. Mr. Brake?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. It's indicated in the report back at the March sixteenth meeting, the city commission voted to close all city facilities. To the public for an indefinite period of time. Most employees have been able to work remotely and maintain services. We have had employees that have continued to work in City Hall as permitted. Now, because of the governor's decision to allow nonessential government operations to resume after May twenty eighth. This is brought back for the the city commission's consideration. What what guidance or what requirements that we need to comply with? Is putting together a plan document. It's called the OSHA Guidance on Preparedness for Workplaces. As it relates to COVID nineteen. And the the document's pretty extensive on facilities, operational procedures. Handwashing facilities, cleaning, and the the list goes on. In preparing this document, we have to put different stakeholders on notice. And make this plan document available on on the website. So it's not a matter of voting and and instantaneously the the. Facilities open up. It's about a two-week lead time. I'm working with assembled a group of city staff to put together a task force to look at all of these these issues. What make this increasingly challenging environment is with the the two facilities. And particularly as it relates to City Hall, as we prepare for the move to the new building. About two weeks prior to making the move, City Hall will close down because our computers will be offline. And the will be asking the employees to pack all of their files and such and move that over to the the new facility. The bottom line is this is getting approval that the city manager that we announce an opening date. Likely for the current City Hall facility will be a very reduced sort of operation. Where we have higher foot traffic, meaning that we have the property tax bills coming out the first of July. That that some individuals prefer to pay in person, that we can make that available. And for individuals wanting to register to vote, that really have a very limited sort of service offering. We still continue to do things online and and over the phone. So if if you kind of bear with us and have been articulating this enough, what what our plan is. We'll we'll open up for a period of time, then close, only to make the move. And this way, if we can focus on really the the reopening at the the new facility. To gradually bring that about. Now, when I say that, one of the other requirements that OSHA makes to be aware of. And many of you have probably heard this, so their private sector employers. If an employee can provide a a service or or work where they do not have to be in person. That the recommendation is that those individuals still continue to work remotely. So this, I don't want this to be construed as that when when we have the reopening. All employees will be brought back to the City Hall facility. So that's a part of the details that that we need to to work out. So what I'm asking for is authorization to declare a particular date. As we put together this plan, I'll share that document with you and and so you know exactly what services that we will have in person. Versus the ones that we will continue virtually and over the phone. Then migrate over to the new building and work towards reincorporating all of the city services. But it'll it'll take a period of time. So again, looking for that authorization for the city manager to declare that reopening date.
Thank you, Mr. Brake. Any questions for Mr. Brake? Commissioner LeBassar?
I'm moved for adoption of the resolution.
Motion by Commissioner LeBassar. We have a second by Commissioner Perush. Discussion?
The way you just described it, Mr. Brake, the logistics of juggling the reopening gradually in the City Hall and the police station. Along with the move to the new facilities, to me is is mind boggling. And we just all have our fingers crossed that there is no other issue that pops up, some weather emergency or something else. You lose power for two days that interferes with the planning of this and the execution of this plan. Because it, to me, it just seems it's so incredibly incredibly complicated. And we just wish you all the best in being able to plan this and execute this. And if there's anything we can do to help socially distanced, pack boxes, whatever. I I think we're all standing ready to to do whatever we can to make it easier on all of you. Because to me, it's just going to be an incredibly complicated procedural process for the rest of the summer. So we just wish you all the best and whatever we can do to help, just give us a call.
And thank you. No, I I really appreciate that. You you're exactly right. We do have a lot of moving parts. And and this is really a group effort, you know, really it's signed, you know. Fortunately, to have such a group of staff here and it really brought together many minds to sort through many of the the details. That are associated with this, but especially with this on again, off again. So that the expression that I've heard that I like to use, we're building the airplane as we fly it.
That's an ambitious but scary thought, but we have no choice at the moment. Well, we're confident in our engineers and instructors of this plan, so. There might be a few hiccups here and there, but that's as expected for this scenario. Any other questions for Mr. Brake about the move? And just to be clear, this isn't an open, open season. This is really permission to start working on, you know, planning a date with limited capabilities and helping facilitate the move and doing it all in a very safe way for our employees as well as for anybody who does have to, you know, do business in person with the city. Okay, all right, there's no other discussion. I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Dubac?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Prouse?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVassar?
Yes.
Okay, all right, Mr. Brake. Good luck. Ain't a lot of it? No?
Thank you.
Expense all the coffee you need. All right, this-
Target the county.
That's right. There you go. Um, this brings us to the last item on our agenda tonight. We had actually moved 17 up, but we have City Clerk Halas's proposal here to discuss another contract potentially with the county to help count absentee ballots. I know the timing on this is unusual, but, you know, we're glad that we're, we're working as briskly as possible to help solve issues. So, City Clerk Halas, if you can bring us up to speed with your request and tell us what you're asking of us and ask you questions thereafter.
Sure. First off, I just want to apologize because as you all know, things have been moving pretty fast. And I just had a Zoom meeting with the Oakland County Elections Director along with the other municipalities in the county. And because House Bill 5141 passed last week, that means that we can actually go into an agreement with the county and they will count our ballots. The one good thing about this is that right now with my counting board, I hire about 20 workers. So for the upcoming elections, I'd have to hire double that easily. And it's not that I don't think they can handle it, they can. But the problem is they count in the city commission chambers. If I'm going to have 40 people up there trying to count ballots, they're not going to be socially distancing. And I just want to do this the safest way possible for August and November. I had to bring this forward because they need a signed agreement no later than July 13th, which our next city commission meeting is obviously July 13th. So I needed to get this on tonight to explain what we're looking at. And also, if for some reason August doesn't go so well, you know, if we go with them and, and, you know, we decide that we want to take them back in November, I can do that, I can cancel it. We are not bound to, to stay with them to continue counting our ballots. Another good thing is that I wouldn't need to purchase another scanner because they're going to make sure they have plenty of scanners. They'll use the ones that I have to count our ballots. But if they need additional ones, it's going to be on them to, to get those for us. So they really want to know as far as how many people were actually interested in doing this. So that's why I'm bringing it to you tonight to see if that's something that you would agree to. And yeah, it's, it's exciting. It's something brand new. So we'll see how it goes. I'd rather try this out in August as opposed to waiting till November. So that's what I'm bringing forward.
Mr. LaVassar?
If I understand correctly, what Ms. Halas needs is a, a resolution or, or a motion here to grant her and the, the mayor authority to sign a contract with the county on behalf of the city. Is that accurate?
Yes, it is.
I'm going to make that motion with the provisional that, uh, provide that the city attorney approves of it first.
But she already did. He did see the contract.
I guess I don't need to include that part then. Motion to give you authority to enter into it, you and the mayor.
We have a second by Commissioner Prouse. All right, discussion? Mr. Prouse?
How, how, how logistically will this work? Will you, will someone actually transport the ballots up to Oakland County on a, on a daily basis, on a hourly basis? How, how is it all going to happen? How is that all going to work?
Well, we're still going to be obviously scanning all the ballots in, checking them, you know, making sure that everything balances every day. But up until four o'clock the day before the election, I have to get the ballots to them where they decide to, you know, figure out where they can count them at because they have to have a building big enough for everybody. And I get the ballots to them. And then anything that comes in after four o'clock the day before the election, I'm going to have those ballots sent to the precincts to be tabulated at the precincts.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or any other discussion? Commissioner, or Commissioner Dubac?
Hey, Mayor, I, I like the strategy of this, getting this set up in time to run for the August election. Just curious, is there a built-in mechanism for if we're not happy with how it goes? You're saying we're not committed to November, right? Or we'll have time to get feedback and fine tune, express any concerns you might have with the process, with the county going forward?
Yes, I just have to let them know 84 days prior to an election if I want them to continue doing so.
How many days are between the August and November election?
I would have to decide. I think it's two weeks after the primary.
I'm trying to do the math in my brain real quick, but it's, it's really, it's tight. It's really, really tight. Yeah, September, October, November, that's 90 days. And then, yeah, roughly with two weeks at the balance of August. Yeah, you have about two weeks to sort through it. Okay. Good. All right, any other, now, now, City Clerk Halas, does that, if it doesn't go well in August, how does that help or hurt your ability to order the new scanner? To, if we're going to take it back in-house?
I can still, if I were to order a scanner, it just takes a couple of weeks to get it here. So I would still have time to order another scanner if we decided to take it back for November.
So there's really minimal risk here on the backend if, you know, things don't go as planned. But if they go well, it's a great, you know, opportunity to help protect a lot against a lot of things and get the health of the county. So that's not so bad.
And I do have to send one person, at least, at least one person from the counting board to help with the process. They'll take as many as I, you know, as many that want to work there, but I have to have at least one person.
Okay, so that's your contribution. Yep. Okay. All right, well, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner LaVassar?
Yeah.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Prouse?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Dubac?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And, and thank you, Ms. Halas, for bringing this to our attention and being flexible. And, you know, things are moving 100 miles an hour and looks like your office is moving 101 miles per hour. So thank you. All right. Well, if I'm not mistaken, I think that brings us to the end of tonight's agenda. So notwithstanding anything for the betterment of our neighbor and fellow citizens, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Motion by Commissioner Gibbs. Do we have a second by Commissioner Douglas? Discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner LaVassar?
Yeah.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Prouse?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Dubac?
Yes.
Macy?
Yes.
And I vote yes, and we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for tuning in. Have a great night. Thank you, everyone, from staff participating and, and sharing your knowledge and wish everyone a really good week.